School committee. We will begin with public comments, guidelines for public comment or comment section B E D H and B E D H dash E of our policy manual. Online, if you're joining us online, if you would like to make public comment, please put your name and address in the chat. The channel will open. Anyone, it is, okay. Anyone in person that would like to make a public comment? No public comment in person? Is there anything in the chat? There is not? There's anyone online that just hasn't had a chance to put their name in the chat? Please unmute yourself if you'd like to make a public comment. Hearing none, we will close public comments. Thank you. Chairperson report, I'm going to keep this very brief because we have a very tight agenda. Tonight, I did meet with the Student Advisory Council on the eighteenth, the day after our last business meeting. I won't, I won't steal Diego's thunder if he wants to report out on it, but it was wonderful. We have a great group of eight students this year plus superintendent, principal, and our unfortunate staff liaison. So that was wonderful and I'll let Diego report on that. I also met with Dorothy Presser from M A S C just to clarify some understanding about the process regarding things we'll discuss tonight with third party evaluation. And that's about it. Oh, one thing to note, again, we do have a very tight agenda. What you'll notice is not on there is continued discussion of our goals. We already had a packed agenda for tonight before we added discussion of the third party review. So we don't have time for that on our agenda tonight. We will pick that up in our next meeting. Let's see, Anna was up for the next round of protocol, but she's not here. So would you mind looking at for us?
Sure. Um, recognize, wait, this one.
Yep.
Recognize that authority rests only with majority decisions of the committee and make no independent commitments or take any independent actions that may compromise the committee as a whole.
Thank you very much. All right. And that's it for my chairperson's report tonight. Student report.
Yeah, so I mean, like you mentioned, we had a, had the meeting on the eighteenth, was it? October? Yeah, I think it was. It was a pretty productive meeting. It was good. A lot of like new faces among the student body, definitely more people than were there last year. A lot of underclassmen, which I thought was good. Really big things we talked about. And this was a lot of this is student, the school council as well was kind of AI in the school and like how to deal with that. What does that look like in the student handbook? What are students' opinions on that? And I think everyone's kind of all over the place and I think everyone's a little confused. So, I mean, I feel like, I don't know, we'll see what happens, I guess, right? It's gonna take time. I also think, I'll talk a little bit more of the seniors about the score project, you know, meeting on that today at school. And I will say, I mean, I don't know, maybe the committee is the place to bring it up per se, but kind of like students who like are taking a lot of E Ps and stuff were concerned about how they were going to get meaningful internships. Considering that like, so every AP you take, they deduct five hours, you're required thirty during the week. So actually a friend of mine takes six APs, so that would be all of them thirty hours. So for people like that who are taking, I guess, like even three APs, it's like, okay, only half the time. Like it's difficult to find an unpaid internship for fifteen hours a week, or it's not even like a consistent, you know, three or four hours chunks. It's like, I can cover two hours and then leave. So like, I definitely think people were a little bit like worried about that and talking and like wondering how they're going to be able to, to do that. So I'll be curious to see what that looks like. Um, and then another thing too, that the score I had brought up was that, I think it was something.
Yes, I am.
The five hundred more absences.
We will, we're gonna discuss that.
Yeah, so I think it's like student, so we went back to class, people were like, oh my gosh, like that's so many absences. Um, and then also like Ms. Roy kind of discussed like what that looks like in the handbook, like where you have X amount of absences in a class and then you're not going to get credit for it. And like, that's not something I do and I'm not absent frequently, should, well, it's something I was personally concerned about, but I think for a lot of people. And I know it's there in the handbook and people can see the handbook, but like majority of students are not reading the student handbook ever. So I think maybe to make it more clear to students in class, like I don't know, heading out of all the books, assembly, Ublock email, just letting them know like, okay, this is what the handbook says. If you're absent this many times, you're not going to get credit for your class. I think that that, just making it kind of more like, like clear, it is clear because it's in the handbook and like, I understand that. But like, sometimes people need to like actually just have it told to them in person very obviously. Okay, you're absent this many times, this is what's going to happen. Because there were a lot of people that I had seen who had no idea that these were the consequences of being absent. So I think communicating that to students would be maybe even in a Ublock with a teacher actually saying it versus the email. Because again, a lot of people don't check their email. But I would say outside of that, I really, really don't have much more.
Questions?
Any conversation about why absences are out or what's contributing to that?
Um, I would say at least within the senior class, like, like typical, like, oh, like senior slide kind of thing, like people just like aren't coming as much because they feel like, oh, it's my senior year, like having first ball class and I don't think I'm going to be doing too much around the past. Like they'll just skip it or whatever and then come and leave. I also think too, I mean, COVID in general, like not now, but like everything just has become a lot more lax over the past like two or three years. I mean, it sounds pretty like terrible, terrible. Like some people still think it's important to come into school on time and like they're okay missing the classwork because then we posted on Google Classroom and they feel that they can just do it at their house and like, I don't know, it's just, it seems like people just don't, don't really care, you know?
Are you feeling that the teachers are being more lax as well, which then means that students are kind of getting away with it more?
Yeah, I mean, I don't even think it's that the teachers are like not reporting the absences, like they're definitely.
They clearly are.
They're, they're reporting that, but I think the problem is it's like, when a student is constantly missing class, I don't think like a conversation between the teacher and the student is happening a lot where it's like, look like you missed class, like you're missing like valuable stuff, like it's more than just you miss it and then you just make up the work. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Versus like.
Be put on notice.
Yeah, or, you know, and it's also like, I think maybe people need to be told like, okay, well, you can do the physical work at your house, but you're missing like the valuable discussions we have in the classroom and you're missing like all that in-person interaction, like it's not the same, you know?
Thank you.
Any other questions for Diego? Well, thank you very much. I'm sure we will hear more about the absence later on. All right, consent agenda, moving on. We'll entertain a motion to accept, to approve the consent agenda, which is the acceptance of warrants for embosses ten twenty-one through ten twenty-five and the minutes from October seventeen, two thousand twenty-three. Is there a motion? Any discussion? Right, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, subcommittee reports. Our facility subcommittee has not met, but this would be a good time perhaps for Avi, if you want to just share publicly the information you shared with us about the final numbers on the fields.
Sure, and I brought handouts just in case people want to be looking at some of the numbers. If you don't, I can just speak to them, you have them already in your materials. But if somebody who's here at the table just wants to raise their hand, if you need it, let me know, it'll obviously be posted. So I think it's, with the project complete, as you know, the last thing that has to happen is just the last little remaining, what we call punchless items. Field's great, there's some little stuff happening at site work. When I wrote this memo, there were a couple of very small items remaining, they might even be done. I had to touch base with Jason until such time that those things are all closed out. We don't, we release the last five percent of retainage. That's standard practice, same thing with building committee project that we did. But we know what that amount is, we don't intend to have any withholdings and we believe that all that work will be done. My friend Joe's been very accommodating on the listeners, so there's really no issues of disagreement there. And so with that, I think just a quick budget to actual review of the project is important and we know that there's going to be some discussion of this. At Essex Town meeting, I did tell the town administrator that I would make sure that they had all the documentation and financials. And we know that Manchester already tipped this up back in the spring. So of the one point six million dollar project estimated budget right now, it looks like the final number will be one, four, two, seven and change. So it's about a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars savings. Very happy about that. It's primarily coming through the estimate that we had for contingency. We talked about that at a prior meeting. We do have, some time ago, we talked about the fact that we can get a state earmark grant, twenty-five thousand dollars. That amount comes off the top so that the towns don't need to fund that portion. And so what's left of the one, four, two, seven is one, four, oh, one. And of the one, one point four million dollars, that gets then, you know, put through the very complicated formula, page what? And we know that, you know, essentially if you were to split it into the two fields, we know Manchester's paying not through the regional agreement, but through the lease agreement for half of the Coach Ed Field Playground, Brook Street Field. So that's, if it's one, four, oh, one total, three fifty would be their share of that. And the remainder, which is the one, oh, five, one goes through the regional agreement apportionment formula. So, you know, a, a non-tip, the labor numbers that might just sound like a big wall of numbers, but when you add up, the enforcement formula basically works out to sixty-six, thirty-four between the two towns. And so when you add the sixty-six of, of the apportion Highland plus and a portion half of Brook to the half of Brook that Manchester has to pay, their numbers looking to be one, oh, four, eight. And the total Essex number is looking to be three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. So we have all the documentation, all the invoices, all that will be sent to the town administrator. I did want to make sure you guys had a chance to look at it first and ask any questions if you had any. Since, you know, as the project manager, we have to oversee not just the project, but also the financials of it. So if you have any questions, please let me know. I did include a draft of the apportionment as well as a very detailed ledger of all the expenses that have been paid. Take any questions if you have any.
I don't have any questions, but I will say thank you. It's always nice to have a project come in under budget, well, under budget. And, and also I think we should take a moment to thank former Representative Belzito for that earmark grant. It's twenty-five thousand, came right off the top of that, so thank you. Anyone else have questions for Avi on this?
Okay. Yeah, and I want to thank our town partners for helping to make this happen. I know we went through a lot of different iterations of how things might look and it took a little time to get there, but it's nice that that's come up for discussion in Manchester and now coming up for discussion in Essex. So I'm extremely appreciative of that, as you know, this allows us to maintain some stability for our future capital projects. So I'm thankful to towns for their support.
Great, thank you very much. All right, collaboration report out. We actually, so you all got the emailed summary from the last meeting. I'd like to hold off on our discussion of that until after the presentation of the operational audit proposal, because that's going to, that's what we spent the bulk of the meeting discussing. And so our, our conversation will come back. And since we have a pretty tight meeting here, if we just move that to that conversation, that would be great. But you did all receive the summary. Negotiations, Kate and Chris.
Negotiations are ongoing. We did the meets. And that's it.
We will meet again.
We will meet again.
Next Tuesday.
We did have sound observers at our last Christmas break. In general, I think things are starting to, progressing, it's going. And we will continue to do the hard work that needs to be done.
And just as a reminder, I can't remember where it was put out there and where it wasn't, but our, our collaboration group partners were invited to be sat in the reverse in this process. I'll send another reminder up, it'll be. Policy and program, who's reporting?
I guess I'll say a few things about the policy side and our program side and then, yeah, and you can talk about the reserve policy. We met with Julie and Joanna about intricacies of scheduling and, and some of their thought process that goes into making decisions around how to accommodate student choice, flexibility, how to, you know, kind of operationalize the scheduling without getting into all the details of the scheduling, more about the principles of how they go about that and the potential impacts of some of those on student availability to certain courses. And ultimately, we are looking at potentially running some scenarios to look at the impact of potential policy, for example, what if we were to say, you know, courses under ten students? Just to see the impact, right? To see if there's a financial kind of impact, to see if there's an impact on student choice and offerings. And along the way, we're identifying some potential ways that we might be able to enhance student options, even in our current practice, separate from any policy. So, you know, for example, an issue came up in our meeting today around, you know, whether or not students can take courses outside the building and get credit for it and what policies are holding that up or preventing it. So those are all under consideration and we're trying to figure out how to kind of model it to understand the impact for student choice, student options and F T units.
Reserve policy. I'm committed to pull a few more reserve policies from other schools and also I'm going to reach out to those towns. Just make sure that our reserve policies are somewhat aligned. And then I'm committed to have a draft before the next meeting, before Thanksgiving. And then the subcommittee is going to provide feedback, then I'm going to bring it to the school committee body for more feedback. It was agreed that we, once the school committee, whereas the final feedback will run through legal auditors, you know, a whole bunch of other people.
So what's that? Anything else? Okay, did you feel like, did you feel left out? They did a great job. All right, so thank you very much. All right, moving on to superintendent's report. Couple of quick things that are going on around the school. These are just more updates, nothing, nothing too in depth. We have, I'm going to leverage that, I've got the whole team here to provide some color commentary. So we have a high school authentic learning trip to Casco Bay going out in the next couple of weeks. Originally scheduled for last spring, but had to get put on hold due to all of the transitions that were taking place. But this is kind of a fact finding mission in support of our goals and strategic plan. I don't know if Heather or Julie, you wanted to provide any color commentary? You know, you've been doing the setup meetings.
Yeah. We've had a couple of meetings where we kind of kind of talk about what our goal would be going into this. And because it was kind of planned before, either of us who are on board, it is exciting to kind of just go in with fresh eyes and just see what we see. But it seems like it's going to be, it's, it's coming Monday to Wednesday, it's with a packed agenda and it should offer a lot of insight into how to, how to innovatively make some changes.
In this came about, it's a, not a grant, so to speak, but a, a funded opportunity that was offered through DESI last year that sometimes they'll call it a group. We had to apply, didn't know that to do too much, but it aligned with our strategic goals, so we were accepted to go. So that will be happening next week. Spoke at the beginning of the year about one of the goals that I'm working on this year is getting us as a leadership team into classrooms more. We go and spent enough, a morning going through Memorial and a morning going through Essex. We have the middle and the high school coming up. Those are just team walkthroughs where we work out into small teams, visit classrooms and then do a debrief at the end to share what we've seen, what we've observed. Part of this is our building toward identifying some look for us for cultural competency coming forward. Obviously, we're also looking at instructional practice, which will become a bigger piece of the conversation tonight with the report. But that's, it's, it's educational, but it's also fun because we're out there and able to see the, the good work in progress and connect with kids. The high school, middle high school scheduling alignment committee continues its work. It knows its timeline, needs to align with that of our scheduling process for the high school. So we should have some conclusions, hopefully by the beginning of January to coincide with the program of studies. Just a couple of grants to note, some, DESI grants that we've received to support strategic priorities. The investigating history grant, we've been awarded some funding there to investigate some curriculum pieces. And we have a continuation of the safe and supportive schools grant, which underwrites a lot of our S E I work. That's just good news. I just wanted to acknowledge Allison and Avi, last week or the week before, they, they did their second year in a row. They present to DESI Special Education New New Special Education Directors Annual Conference. They go and they present on best practices in budget and financing. So we have two statewide experts here in-house that are seen as excellent resources for both the department and for their colleagues throughout the state. So just kudos to them. Some example of modeling, when we talk about some of our evaluation processes, when you look at a standing of exemplary, one of the things you have to do to earn an exemplary title is be able to model the work that you do. So this is an example of that.
All sports postseason play is underway. How many teams do we have in the, in postseason play?
We had, we had several. And now we have field hockey out there now and I believe, I don't know if anything good, it was two to nothing, but on the zone.
It's pretty spore, it was four, nothing when I left.
Seeing a five. Yeah, then we have some football tomorrow night, or Thursday night.
Football.
We're already advancing.
Field hockey does prevail tonight, they will be here on Friday, I believe.
Right.
And girls soccer is playing tomorrow night. They have a lengthy drive out to South Avenue, so thank goodness for Thursday not being the day for students to be in the building. They will be very tired.
And then just wanted to remind everyone, we had social media and adolescent brain parent workshop scheduled for earlier in October. Elizabeth Englander is presenting, she had, we'll leave a death in the family and we had to reschedule it. So that's coming up next week on the sixteenth. I have a few comments about the assessment report to launch when we're ready for that. But two things I did want to share, I know I shared it in an email, I didn't make a note of it here, but let me see if I can bring it up. Bring up my screen. So ongoing throughout the last year and into this fall, we've been talking about something called the October one report, a reference in the regional agreement. I can honestly, we still don't really know exactly what that is, but I've said on a couple of occasions, I think it might have something to do with the end of year report that we submit on or around October first each year to the state. So it's the DESI end of year financial report. So whether it satisfies that need or not, what we've done is built out a webpage to house all of our back reports. So people can go in and take a look at them, they're public documents, they always have been. So we took this opportunity in the ongoing discussion just to build this out. So you can find it, it launches either from the main page, quick link to the budget page or under district and operation and finance. And you can just find it right here along the side. The other thing that we've always had on this page for reference are our annual audits. So that's our, the end of year report is submitted and audited. We also do an annual audit, financial audit. So you have the entire background history here, if anyone, if this is of interest to anyone. There's also an O P E D page and grant pages and things like that. But, you know, with our discussions of transparency and information and where does it exist? Just taking this opportunity to point it out because it's actually been sitting here for a long time. I'm just not sure that anybody knows to go get it or knows where to find it. So happy to answer those questions. I know we've had a couple of inquiries, so it is there now.
Wonderful, thank you for doing that.
Complementarily, compliment, make enough work. To complement the financial side, we're also trying to find one, it's less pretty right now, but a warehouse for all of our programmatic reports that we've been done, doing throughout the year. So this will get, this is just a small list, we'll get it built out. So we're hearing the input and we're trying to make them more easily accessible to people in a logical way.
Excellent. That is that. Thank you. Yeah. Any questions from the committee for Pam about the superintendent's report? All right, well, thank you very much. We are ahead of schedule and it's good because we need it. So moving on to continued business, our first item is the annual student assessment report. So I'd like to welcome the, the team presenting to come join us. Special welcome from our committee to Heather Leonard, our new director, director of curriculum and instructional technology. Got that right, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. This is, this is quite, quite a one to present to us for the first time because we had, I think, probably more emails and input on this particular item than, than most in recent memory. So we're very lucky to have you here. Just as a, as a setup for our committee, like I mentioned earlier on, we are going to keep it kind of tight tonight. We have had a chance to look at things and send in questions and thoughts about the way it's presented and all of that. And we have certainly done so. So we love data as a group, we have lots of it. If anyone on the committee would like, there are printouts of the most recent version of everything. So what, I guess what I'm going to structure this for the committee is to say, let's, let them do the entire presentation, see where we are with time. We'll definitely do one round of questions, literally a round of the table of questions for it. And then depending on the time, we'll see if there's time for a second round. So our job is, we, we've had the chance to true, to be looking at all of the data and our job now is to be active listeners and understand the context that you guys can bring to it, which is equally important. So thank you very much.
I'm actually going to start.
Go ahead.
And thank you to the team because they put in a lot of time and effort to, a lot of thought into it, but also time and effort into coordinate and synthesize all of their work together. I'm going to give you a quick balcony glimpse, kind of the furthest out you, you could get. And these are just some themes that as you are listening, I think you'll hear repeated over and over again. And the way we'll progress is it will start, if you recall last year, we'll start with Heather, we'll start broad, we'll drill down to the school and then we'll come back out again. So these are just some things to kind of keep in mind, keep in the back of your mind as they're presenting. So if we get up on the balcony and take a look at all, all of the data and then what's been distilled into a hundred and twenty, some odd sides. I think there's clear evidence that we're progressing toward attaining our strategic priority, our district improvement priority, our school improvement priority of creating a safe and supportive environment. And the purpose for that is to create a foundation for student achievement. I think we walk away knowing we're not meeting our own expectations around student achievement for myriad reasons. There's a lot of things that have happened over the past few years that have created some challenges and struggles for teachers and students. But I think you'll hear tonight that we, you know, we are in good, good position to keep battling forward and bring kids where they need to be. One theme you'll hear throughout is that tier one instruction is where the work is. It needs to be adapted to the changing needs of our student population. That's why we have spent a little time just making everyone aware of, of the population in front of us. We've come to know it on the day today, we're not sure that everyone is aware, so we did take some, whether it takes some time to provide some context there. So if we're going to improve outcomes, we need to improve tier one instruction, that's classroom instruction, that's everyday instruction. That's not intervention per se. How about tier one instruction should include some level of intervention? You'll hear more about that. I think we collectively identified that we have a very strong system for identifying needs, but we need to improve what our instructional response is to those needs so that we get to see more movement and growth. So we know, we're pretty clear on where some of the struggle areas are. We need to improve our practice in tier one, see a better result in moving kids forward. And then probably the best, the best news, or one of the things I'm most pleased with is that this is, we kind of had a sense of some of this for a while in the strategic plan, the district plans. The school plans have lots of breadcrumbs in there for the road forward. So when you look at the plans and you see things like shift and intervention delivery styles, that's meant to push back into tier one. It's meant to have it be less exclusive and more inclusive. The team will give you more detail there. Training on universal design for learning, that's about improving our instructional battery so we can reach more students, understanding by design, alignment with standards. All of those pieces are the work that you'll hear Heather and the team speak to that needs to happen to strengthen the tier one core to increase the outcomes for kids. So just keep those things in the back of your mind, these are strands that I think you'll see running through, but you'll hear the. So just keep those things in the back of your mind. These are strands that I think you'll see running through, but you'll hear them applied to each of the different, the school buildings, the district work in the last. So with that, I'm going to kick it over to Heather who will be your leader for the remainder.
Be your tour guide for the evening. There were a lot of really thoughtful questions that the committee shared. So what you will see is that in the print versions, if anybody wants it, there's a very, very rich appendix. So there's sometimes that there are questions that may have been asked that, and I'm happy to pass along if anybody. So there are some questions that may have been answered that you might not see in some of the formal sites we present, but we tried really hard to hear any of the questions that were there and reflect that in our data. And I think I was saying when I, when I came here earlier, I was like, I was glad the meeting was tonight because we were going to keep touching it and adding to it and playing with it until, so 118 slides is probably enough. Don't worry, we're not going to talk about all of them. But I'm really excited to be here with the team to celebrate and to raise our areas for growth and where we're moving forward as a district. And I think the driving work that this district has laid out, both in their founding documents and the vision that you have established for our students and the structures that are in place, we are really, really well poised to do the work that we're charged with. So I think Pam said it really well. The information that we see in here is really the why for the things you've heard in the previous meetings from the school improvement plans. So those, the, the work that's happening in our classrooms, the focus on academics and instruction that have been identified by your building leaders. This is really, this is the data that's, that's our indicators to move us toward action. For, for, oops, here we go. I'm going to do that a few times. So the overview for the district is we have areas of strength that we're certainly going to celebrate and that also create a foundation and a starting point so that we can move forward and take next steps with work. And we also have specific areas for growth that you're going to hear us talk about, not only where we see them, but also what our plans are for some of those next steps. So I'll come back and talk a little bit more about each of these pieces at the end, but I just wanted to frame to know that the strengths that are in place are in place because of the good work that's been taking place from the educators and the leaders in the district and the students and families in the district. And they've really set us up to take those next steps. The other piece I want to say is that this is a forever work, like we are a continuous improvement field. And so there will never be a year that there's nothing on the areas for growth, both because that's what we do, we continually strive to do better. And also our needs change, our demands and expectations change, our students change. So, so this is something that will happen every year that we will have places that we want to celebrate and also room for us to continue to improve. So that gets me really excited about the places that we can really see ourselves going forward in the future. I wanted to share this idea of a data landscape. This is a data pyramid that is created by Nancy Love, who really is outlining this idea of like, how do you have information about learning and instruction and students? And how do you make decisions about what you do? And the bottom tiers of the pyramid are really this idea that every single day throughout classes, educators have information about their students. And then some of it's observational, some of it's collected, some of it's paper pencils, some of it's through sharing. But, but the bulk of the decisions and the data that happened really happened in this data that we don't collect formally. We don't have a way of showing you charts, but that's really what's driving our instructional response for students and our choices and our collaboration with teachers. Because it is immediate and frequent and all the time, there isn't an easy way to look at it. So while we're going to look at the top few levels of the pyramid, because that's what we have access to, please know that that is not the only source of data that we use to make decisions. And that frankly, it's irresponsible to make a choice based on any singular set of data. So this is all really used in concert, whereas some of those top layers of the pyramid we're going to look at might help us look at systems, programs and trends. That bottom level of data is really where we're looking at our students and our instructional responses and our choices with the customers. So this is where we're going to dig in today. We have a chance to look at a few different sets of data and information to dig into this evening. Some of it is that summative, like years done, everything's, you can't do anything about it. Just let's get a chance at how we do, what can we do better? That middle piece, we're really thinking about people, practices and perceptions. Who are we? What are we doing? What do we have? What do we need? And then that middle block is that benchmark, that benchmarking or that diagnostic type use. So we'll get a chance to look at a few of these this evening, primarily because the way these are collected, we have access to it. So it's easy for us to look at and talk about. But again, it's certainly not the only information. All right. This is one, that second tier that I talked to was just about who we are and what does it look like in our Manchester Essex schools? These demographic information are pulled out because this is often what's pulled out by DESI when they're starting to look at who are we, who are we serving? And are we meeting the needs of all of our learners? And I think sometimes this data is assumed and sometimes we're surprised when we start to look at some of the categories of data. So on the left, we have student grade and race and ethnicity. And on the right, we have selected populations and in that term, in those categories are identified by DESI as particular ones that we're really charged with minding in addition to our aggregate and our general trends. Specifically, the bar on the bottom is the one that I wanted to highlight for us. So this is a trend of over the last 10 years, and this is showing our high needs population trend. So when we talk about high needs, that is a category that DESI has established. And included in your high needs population are students that are designated as low income, English language learners or former English language learners and students with disabilities. Now, if you go back to the prior chart and you just add them up, you will see those don't align. Because I could be a student who is an English language learner who's also a student identified with a disability. So there are sometimes students who are identified multiple times within these categories. So just if the data isn't aligned, that's why. But I'm showing you this chart because I think it might be surprising for us as a district to recognize the fact that almost 30% of our students are identified as high needs. And that that trend has shifted significantly within a singular decade. And in fact, even for the shorter period of time, really within the last five years. And that important information is really our charge because our responsibility is to make sure all of the learners in our classrooms are getting what they need and that we're meeting everybody's needs. And so when we see this, things that may have worked in previous years, we might have to change and adjust and be responsive to, not because the practice didn't work, but because it might not work for everyone now. So minding this is really just clarifying, this is our responsibility to make sure all of the students in our classroom have access to instructional practices, which curriculum and coherent experiences throughout their years here in school. So this is a slide about attendance. And these three attendance facts, I polled Angela last year, Director of Curriculum last year, shared three data points on attendance. So I thought I wanted to be responsible and share where are we now? And what you'll actually see is that while we're seeing a decrease in absenteeism as compared to last year. So the aggregate district trend is heading in the correct direction. There's still some concerning trends and patterns in our, in our attendance and absenteeism. And so when you think about missing 10 or more days or 10% or more, so 10% would be 18 school days or more. And then 2.4% or 29 students who have missed 20% or more of their school day. And you think about that context, not only are we really charged with making sure that our students are receiving the education and that we're taking good care of them. And this is one of those barriers to entry. If you are not here, you said it really well, right? You, you might be able to do the work, but how do you engage with your colleagues and your classmates? How are you engaging in the conversation? Some of the richest learning happens in those student to student exchanges. And it does impact your great peers and classmates when your voice isn't present or when, you know, a significant chunk of my classmates aren't there and my teacher's moving us forward. How do we move the group forward when some of the group missed it or I wasn't here or we're catching up? So, so the attendance in general is a, is a great space for us to have some tangible steps forward. While it might not be an achievement dataset, it's another one we're responsible for. So again, good trends in the aggregate district, but there's still places and you're going to hear it come up a few different times tonight. And that this is something we're definitely aware of and continuing to monitor, to address. Okay. So VOCAL data, VOCAL is acronym for Voices of Climate and Learning. DESI loves acronyms, we know. And this is a dataset that's been in place for a few years and has been collected by DESI. It actually is collected at the end of the MCAS window. So just put yourself in that headspace, if you will, and I'm going to ask you, how do you feel and how, you know? But it's actually pretty exciting to think about what we're seeing happening in Mr. Essex, especially with what is given and how. So the vocal data is data that asks about different indicators about school climate, which include engagement, safety and environment. And there's items that are asked across all of those different categories. And then they make connections between the different themes to give you a scaled score. So when you see the bars in the middle, those are a scaled score that let us think about like, what do we, what does that tell us? What do we do with that? And they put it into buckets of like least favorable, somewhat favorable and most favorable climate. So they just give you an idea of where are we falling. But then you're also going to notice that I'm pulling out some specific items. And these items are going to be shown as a percentage because that is, if a student answers mostly true or always true, that's counted as them making a statement of truth. So that percentage is this percent of our Manchester Essex students answered that that was a true statement. So you're going to see both of those sets of data happening in here. The other piece you're going to notice in the vocal data is the top bar will be the state and the next bar will be the point of comparison. However, the state aggregate data includes fourth grade, fifth grade, eighth grade and 10th grade. Well, fourth grader is going to answer the assessment really differently than an eighth grader. So when you see the comparison point, just make note that our, our district is the orange versus the state in gray here. But in each one, when we were looking at the levels, for example, the high school, you're going to love to see that the state numbers actually shifted because what we're doing is comparing our high school against the average 10th grade around the state of Massachusetts. So we pulled out just so you can see the trends across and also some of these statements in the students' point of agreement. It's some pretty powerful statements about students' learning environment that happened here. So I definitely want to celebrate and recognize our educators and leaders who created incredibly safe and engaging school environment. And that frankly, that is step one to a learning space, right? You cannot learn if you don't feel safe. You cannot learn if you're not engaging in the work. So these are really critical foundational steps. Here's your middle school story. And again, looking against state eighth graders and looking at where our Manchester students are, there's a lot to celebrate, especially that feeling of safety. And then finally, against our elementary, which this has the state, it has our fifth grade and an aggregate, aggregate. And then it has Memorial and Essex. And these are all fifth grade. They do also collect fourth, but it kind of gives us that nice perspective of end of elementary experience. And this one is just, this is the one, if I walk away tonight, if 100% of the teachers at the school accept me for who I am. Not 100% of teachers, 100% of the students say teachers at this school accept me for who I am. So we're ready, right? We're absolutely ready to do that next step in that work. And that's also another celebration of if we look back and think about the work that has been put into place about the social, emotional learning and that focus on that really targeted intentional plan for our teachers to know how to create those conditions and implement them and work with students. That's a real testament to the, to the work that this district has done in establishing that as a goal. So kudos. Okay. Shifting gear, we're going to look at a different dataset, which is iReady. iReady is a data assessment tool that last year was the first year that I was implementing kindergarten through eighth grade. Now, the tool iReady itself is new for us as a whole picture. However, that process of collecting data isn't new. So this, what iReady has done is it's let us take different data tools that have been used at different levels and have a consistent assessment that's used. So we can look at what is that vertical trend? What's that coherence? What does that pattern look like over the course of the year? It also lets us start to have conversations in shared ways so that a first grade teacher could talk to a seventh grade teacher about what are you noticing in the trend from the assessment? What does that mean for us? What is that experience throughout the students' vertical academics in reading and in math? So the tool itself is new and last year being first year, I just want to show you sort of the, that look back over the course of where we ended in last year. So the bars on the left, they're going to show you our growth. So that growth is, this is our median growth and this is the percentage of typical growth that our students showed as compared to a national growth trend. So in that top row in reading, Manchester Essex growth as compared to a national growth trend was 150%. And our math was 109%. So that's letting us look at what would we expect to see within a school year and what is that median growth point of our students over the course of the year? This is aggregate trends again. So this, we're looking at K8 in our district. Over to the right, you're going to see the distribution of where students fell for their spring scores, but I'm going to, I want to dig into that a little bit more detailed with you. So this is our reading and this is last year. So this is the, over the course of last year, this is all of our students kindergarten through eighth grade in their iReady assessments. And this is the results of the fall, then the winter, and then the spring diagnostic assessments for reading. When you're looking at the bars, iReady uses a grade level band to measure. And the colors are, are what's communicating to us where they are. Now, I don't love that they picked red, yellow, green because I think that has its own messaging. So let me tell you what those each might mean. When you're looking at the stripy green or the shaded green, that's telling you that our students are at end of year grade level or above, like that is where by the end of fourth grade, this is where we're going to expect our students to be. Or beyond. That light green, that or that just plain green bar is where students are earlier on in that grade level. So when that first, basically that first half of that full year is where, where that solid green is. That yellow is telling us that students are one grade level below. And that, that solid red and the stripy red are multiple grade levels below. Now that being said, when I enter in the fall, I'm not expected to be at an end of year, right? I'm just entering in that classroom. So entering in at a yellow would be completely appropriate. Through the year though, we really want to see that bar. We, we're aiming for that stripy green bar to really be filling up our population versus. So these were our reading results from last year. These were our math. The one piece I will say is that there, there were certain bands of these that were not completed in the spring. So it is possible that this is not showing, we do know that this is not showing us that full extent of what our two students achieve because it will pull in your prior results. So there's a bit of a skew on that spring assessment. But this was what we saw for that year one of implementation across our district for this diagnostic assessment happening throughout. If for those who are like loving the data with me and your appendix, you can look and see we're looking at trends over time. And you can also look to see where our current fall is, our fall first round assessment. All right. Stay with me. We're jumping. We're talking about another dataset. So accountability, so accountability often comes out in partnership with MCAS, but it's not only including MCAS. Accountability is a measure that the state has utilized in order to be responsive and charge districts with not maintaining but growing, which frankly is our continued goal. So I really like accountability because what it's not doing is just like, you're doing fine. You can continue to do fine. It literally is calculated that they took where schools were. They said, based on where you are, we expect your students to improve. So here's your target and you have this long to meet it. And then every year they measure your growth towards that target of increasing. And if you meet that target, you get three points. If you lose or you go backwards, you can get as low as zero points. And if you're far exceeding, you can get four. So it's a band of zero to four points along a criteria of target. The benefit of accountability is it's charging us to improve against ourselves. And it also is making sure that we're accountable across different datasets. Now, they have not given districts accountability measures since 2018, 19 school year. They gave schools some accountability percentiles last year, but districts, we have not had it since then. And as a district, we've, we're, we've bet 64%. So we've made substantial progress towards targets. I'm going to show you a little bit about what that looks like. Then each of our schools also had target percentages. How did they do towards meeting those personalized targets they set? And their percentile is as compared to other schools at their range, how did they do? And their percentile is as compared to other schools at their range, how did they do? I do not expect you to be able to read these, but I'm showing you that this is how our accountability is calculated. So here's the buckets that are pulled from when they're establishing our accountability. They're looking at achievement that's at first light green, and that is MCAS. How, how do we do with our students meeting those, meeting or exceeding on MCAS in the ELA, math, and science? The green is growth. So not just did they achieve, but did they improve from their previous years? So each student, again, is measured against their own cell. They get a growth percentile. So did we continue to move our students forward in their growth rates? The orange is the high school completion. So critical, critical criteria include that graduation rate, extended engagement, and annual dropout rate. The purple bar, we as a district do not yet have enough data points to measure. So that's progression, progress towards English language proficiency. You have to have enough students in a cohort for Desi to release that data. We do not yet have that number of students, so we, we can't see that data in a public realm. However, internally, we can see progress towards that for individual students. And then the gray bar down below, that, that is a bucket called additional indicators. So that's chronic absenteeism and advanced coursework completion. Now, not only does Desi ask us about accountability for all of us, but they also break it apart. And they, towards your accountability score, they look at how did your, how did all of your students do? And then how did your lowest performing students do? That lowest performing group is just identified from MCAS scores, and it's just the lowest percentage. And how did that group do? And they also look at demographic groups. So specifically, high needs is something that would be contributing to our scores. This is the final big data set that I want to talk about that gives us an overarching picture, and then you're gonna get to hear the good stuff. This is just some, a few data sets from Advanced Placement. The one thing I did want to mention is, other than iReady, and other than this Advanced Placement, which is our 2023, everything that I showed you, you can see. So we're, not only are we gonna be continually sharing and being transparent about our results, but Desi releases the vast majority of this data through their district profile page. So I definitely invite you, this'll, if you're like me, you wanna have a data party, you can dig through, there's a ton of reports there. There's a lot of great information that's released. It really helps us to get a feel of where are we, how are we doing, and making sure that anyone in the community can look and see. So if you're curious a little bit more beyond my fun appendix, you can go to our website as well. So Advanced Placement, this one is not yet publicly released, but it will be. And these are some data sets pulled, and I share this from the district side because not only is it a celebration of the work happening at the high school, but this is a culminating representation of that pre-K or K-12 experience our students have. So just some interesting facts to share about our AP with the number of tests taken. Eighty-six per students with the scores of three plus, which would indicate a passing score. Six courses that had a hundred percent passing and seventy-nine, which was the test score five, which is the highest you could get, seventy-nine tests. And I say tests, not students, because Diego said, but like you might have a kid who took six. So I don't know if, if, you know, seventy-nine of those were the same. Yep. So you can dig more into that. Actually, that was a question that's been pulled out of your appendix. All right. So big picture, that's sort of just the indicator of where we are. And now we'll let you hear from the people you're really here to see. So pass that to you, Julie.
Continuing with the AP exams, talking about the strengths in the high school. There was a five percent increase in scores of three or above. And I included in the appendix just our scores over the last few years from 2019 on. So we have trended in a positive direction since 2019, with the exception of 2020. And I think 2020 is very skewed, because AP was taken at home or not, just was not the same kind of data. So 2019, we had seventy-seven percent at three or above, and now we're at eighty-six percent. So we have consistently increased our scores for our Advanced Placement classes. So that's something we are definitely here to celebrate. It is something a lot of our juniors and seniors participate in that in AP courses. So it's, it's on a lot of minds. Additionally, our school climate and safety, which we also talked about from the vocal data, eight percent of students, or students feel, I'm sorry, eight percent more positive about their school climate as compared to the state. So that is quite a bit more than we would have the state average. And then they feel ten percent safer than students from across the state. And that's using that vocal data, again, that they take at the end of, or they take that survey at the end of MCAS. That loops into all of our training with our SEL work, looping our U block teachers, the Alice training, you know, making sure that students are feeling, and our staff are feeling safe all around. That students do feel more safe than they would against, as compared to the state. In addition to that, I also talked about, or I also took some data from the survey from Castle Core Competencies, which is a survey that the students take every year starting in grade six. And they also, the students, the seniors showed significant growth. Ninety-five percent of the current seniors reported that they can identify ways to resist peer pressure, which is all, of course, a great skill to have as they head off to college or are off into the real world next year. Another great thing is they, there was a significant growth across the domain of responsible decision making. So again, it just speaks to our goal and our strategic initiative to celebrate and nurture an inclusive and diverse school culture that recognizes the contribution. So we're making a lot of progress toward that and making sure our students feel safe and secure to take those academic risks and to try new things and to just be who they're meant to be. And that goes along with our accountability data. We are at the high school meeting or exceeding our targets, seventy-eight percent progress toward improvement targets. So we are meeting our targets, and we are experiencing growth, and we're making the strides we need to make. That leads us to our areas for growth, which is attendance. So that's something we spoke to. I spoke to the seniors this morning about. So absences and tardiness has increased. So I had, we pulled some data. We pulled the September and October absences and tardies across the board, whether they're excused or unexcused, just absent or tardy. How many incidents we had in September, October last year, and how many incidents of absences and tardies we had this year. So that increased from, there were one thousand four hundred and eighty incidents in those two months last year to one thousand nine hundred and seventy-three incidents in this year. So that's almost five hundred more incidents of that. Again, that includes everything. That includes students that are out for medical reasons. That includes just all of that, the aggregate data, because Desi doesn't discern between senior, senior privilege or any of that. They just look at that as a whole. That's definitely something we need to pay close attention to. If you're, you know, if you're absent, you're, you're not here learning. Heather spoke about what that means for your peer group and what that means for your connection to the school. So it, it's something we are focusing on. We're taking action steps toward. We do have attendance and tardy working groups who are reviewing policies. They're looking at what other districts are doing. They're looking at ways to, to increase attendance and make sure that students are here when they need to be here. We're working with families on curbing absences and tardies as well. And, and that goes with our strategic initiative number two, which is integrate social emotional learning into all aspects of the school day. If they're not here, we can't be integrating and helping with their social emotional needs. But also, how does this attendance and tardy affect the rest of this data and what we're seeing with trends? The other, the other place where we would kind of pay attention to some areas for growth is math and math. So our meeting and exceeding expectation decreased by four percent. And our student growth percentage dropped by six percent. So I do have some things in the appendix you can take a look at. We do also get the data where we can see the results by standards. So as something we can target for, where did we make growth? Then they break it down into standards. We can see where were we making strides and where do we need to focus? So we can take that data and really use it to drive where we're going and, and drive the learning and, and the need for improvement. We have in the past few years made some math staffing changes and some schedule adjustments so that we have our teachers poised to be the, the best fit for the students and in teaching their best subjects. We've also talking about the formation of an academic intervention programming to further bolster and to further support our students who need that extra support. And we talked about it earlier, we're exploring these innovative learning opportunities to push us forward. So that learning excursion to Casco Bay should really drive some of our decision making in the future and just see what another smaller school can do with what they have and just see where they're, where they're going. And we're gonna examine opportunities for content areas, for instructional support. We're gonna look at reorganization of stipend funding and see what we can do to reorganize and surround and support our students that need it most, and how can we target these areas?
Moving right along. So some of this will be repetitive. So for the sake of time, I won't go too much into specific detail about some of the data. It's in your appendix, as you've been told. So we are pleased to have made substantial progress towards our target with an eighty-one percent accountability rating. And we are extremely proud of the fact that our special education and high need subgroups exceeded targets. That is attributed to many things. The first would be that we, we, three or four years ago, restructured our special educational service delivery. Rather than having a team, a team model, little layers on at each team level, we've moved to content area specialists. So we have a humanities specialist and a STEM specialist. And those are special educators who work at all three grade levels, and they do co-teaching in English and math classes at the level where it's most needed by students. Our special education team is really exceptional. Some students in our Earl program who had never passed MCAS did pass this last year. So that's a real testament to the work that they're doing. A special education, special education team presented to the entire faculty a couple of weeks ago on tools and strategies that they use across programs and the consistency that they've developed. And we're working to move that into all of the content areas. So I'll get into that when we get into areas for improvement. In science, we exceeded all targets, exceeded targets in all subgroups, and we've seen consistent growth, a nice trend over the past several years. Reading and math, we have some positive news in that our cohort growth, and you'll see it in the appendix, you know, cohort growth is in an upward direction. Not as high as we'd like it to be. So there's work to do, but at least we are seeing an upward trend in sixth and eighth grade. And I'll get into seventh grade when we, when we move on. And then the vocal data, again, to be somewhat repetitive, to have eighth graders at the end of a year where they're taking English, math, science, and last year's civics MCAS. You know, they finished that science MCAS at the end of the whole cycle. And right after that last question, they get this survey and they answer the survey. So to have them rating in the, you know, ninety percent and above is really exceptional, especially in the area of safety. And I think all principals here would tell you that our first job before anything is to create a safe learning environment for our students. So this speaks to the work we've been doing through our strategic initiative to create that. And that feels great to see that, that progress. Areas for growth, absenteeism, once again. So we have, first of all, in general, we aren't pleased with where we're at. We're doing some things well, but not as well as we should be doing them, and we know that. My faculty and I, we dug into the data the minute it was available, and teams got together both vertically and across grade levels to really dissect the data and see where we're looking like should need some improvement. So things are happening in the classroom level, team level, and also vertically, and I'll get into that. The chronic absenteeism, so the lowest performing students out of a total score of four received a zero. You may recall a couple of years ago or last year, I'm losing track of time, we talked about new tardy policy language, where there were some consequences put in place for students who had five or more tardies. And that seems to be working fairly well. The absentee data is still an area of concern and focus. So in addition to our standard system-generated letters that go out at five days of absence, ten days of absence, and fifteen days, I am also taking a look at the lowest, the, the students who scored in this lowest performing area, keeping an eye on those attendance numbers and making phone calls home and having meetings with parents and students when the need arises. We also have something, we can leverage the state juvenile system through something called a CRA, which is a child requiring assistance. And we, you know, we've had one to two a year. I have been working with the probation officer who is assigned to our school, and she has done some pre-CRA meetings. So that allows me to talk to parents, you know, have that first, first intervention, which is a letter, you know? We're paying attention. Second is phone call from the principal, meeting with the principal. The third is, now we're gonna have a meeting with the principal and a probation officer from the juvenile court in Salem. And that probation officer is going to tell you the law, tell you the responsibility of the school, let you know what it would look like if the, if the school didn't fact file a CRA, that the school is legally obligated to file CRAs. And this is what the reality would be if attendance doesn't include. I'm having one of those meetings in a couple of weeks, and I, I hope not to have to have more, but I will have as many as I need to have until we see the attendance improving. So moving on to some of the data from our assessments, we have seen a consistent need for improvement of reading and responding to informational texts. That's an area that we've been focusing on throughout the years. We've really stepped it up quite a bit more this year in many different ways. We feel it's essential to lay a very solid foundation of skills in sixth grade and, you know, embed some knowledge so that seventh and eighth grade teachers can activate that background knowledge, really lean on the skills that have been developed in sixth grade. So one of the things, we're doing many things, but one of them is during our ME blocks, we're doing drop everything and read in sixth grade and requiring the students to do it in a book rather than a tablet, rather than on a computer. Things just hit differently. I'm sure you may experience it yourselves when you're reading on paper or writing on paper versus through the tech. And our young children with developing brains, we just, we need to lean more into the good old fashioned paper sources and embed some of those critical skills. Sixth grade is also implementing something they're calling reading across discipline, disciplines. And they're activating a homeschool connection through this where expository text, brief articles are being sent home for homework. Students read the text themselves and then are asked to read it out loud over course of the week to their parents. This helps with fluency. This helps with decoding, and it will help with comprehension over time. They have some comprehending questions to respond to. And then when they're in the classes, teachers are using some strategies to improve comprehension. They're also focusing on math on Mondays where students are practicing, especially for math facts. Because we have seen that is an area of need over the years. That automaticity is just not there. So we're working to build that in sixth grade so they can leverage that throughout. I mentioned that our special education team presented to the entire faculty. They talked about their programs. They talked about the consistent tools that they use across programs. And those teams are also going to be working at the sixth grade level. We've got five content areas. I've got five special education teachers. We're going to take one ME block to go in and model for the general education teacher and also co-teach some tools for reading comprehension, like brain frames and verbalizing, visualizing, and two column notes, things like that. So that is bolstering that tier one support through the expertise of our educators who work at the tier two and tier three level most often. So we're leveraging, leveraging them to, to improve some of that. Science and social studies classes, this is again at the sixth grade level. They're also doing much more reading and writing in response to expository text. It's a natural fit for those classes that they'll be reading textbooks and articles and, you know, all alike that, that comes with reading expository text. They're seeing a high need for scaffolded support to improve and strengthen paragraph development. So that is something they're working on. It's CERs where students make a claim, they provide evidence, and then they get the reasoning for their evidence. That's similar to what their MCAS writing will look like, because they, they have to provide evidence for the claims that they're making. They're using color coding. They're, they're using a lot of different baseline scaffolding techniques in order to address some of the needs that we're seeing. And then a strong need across all grade levels is the need to build stamina and help our kids sustain a single task. One of the, the data and the types and tools, iReady and MCAS are excellent diagnostic tools. They're excellent summative tools or benchmark assessments. But they're also measuring a student's ability to sustain a two-hour test and to attend to a task for two hours. So we are looking at ways to increase our formative assessments. Heather talked about that earlier. Those in the moment assessments that a teacher may do at the end of a class, you know, for exit tickets and other measures, to, to see where the student is at the end of that lesson so that they can use that information. so that they can use that information to inform the lesson the next day. So when I say, you know, areas for improvement, types and tools of data collection, we really need to, to increase those shorter assessments and tools so that we know where they're at day to day rather than waiting till a trimester, quarter, and a year. You know, it's better to be looking forward instead of looking in the rearview mirror. And across all classrooms at all grade levels, we are working to strengthen our vertical and cross-team consistency. Similar tools, similar language, similar approaches, regular meetings to look at data, to discuss that across the different areas of expertise, whether it's a content area person or a special educator. We are increasing vocabulary instruction across all grade levels. If students don't understand the words that are being used, they can't, you know, attend to the question. So we're doing a lot more in the moment, text-related vocabulary building, looking at MCAS-specific vocabulary and helping students understand that, you know, when this word is used, it may, it may mean they're looking for this. So kind of cross-referencing what they may see versus what they're saying on a day to day. And looking at trends in the standards, Julie mentioned, we can take a look at the performance standard by standard. Our teachers have been doing that for the past two to three years and really looking for, you know, is there a standard? Am I seeing through the data that there's a standard that I need to address at a different time of the year? Do I need to do my pacing a little bit more slowly? An example is this I Ready fall assessment, seventh grade. They don't, they don't hit geometry till the spring. So that is naturally going to look like it's an area for growth in the fall because it's, it's something they haven't quite worked on in that specific year. Our humanities, sorry, our STEM department chair is working with the math and science teams. So she oversees both content areas. And they are working on the practice standards, which are basically the skills that students need to have in order to effectively achieve progress in the content area. So pulling back a little bit from the, you know, integers focus to more critical thinking skills, analytical skills and analysis, being able to form an argument, being able to address the argument of someone else and still make your point. So they're just digging into that and looking at ways to increase the amount of work they're doing in that area. Team members are sharing ideas, they're, they're going away and trying things out. They're coming back to the next department meetings and talking about what they did and how it worked and what it looked like. So that work is beginning and will be ongoing. How we doing? Oh, let's just, sorry. Lastly, and Julie mentioned, we, we really want to take a look at our structure, our stipend structure and see where there are opportunities to increase instructional support and coaching across the content areas. We are hoping to be able to make some shifts in how we do that now through an assessment of how we're, have our, our stipends structured and seeing what we can do there in order to bring more supports into the tier one environment.
So for Essex, we want to celebrate the overall SEL climate to the vocal data. And that's not by accident. So that's been two years of really unpacking the SEL initiative, the ruler curriculum that we put into place and all the elements there and developing out the curriculum for SEL. So we feel really proud of that work and it has been a priority at Essex. And it certainly has laid the foundation, as, as everyone has said, to make sure that kids feel safe and supported there and a sense of belonging. We also take great pride that we've expanded our family engagement in our activities and our involvement, our school-wide community meetings, our school-wide events. Because that family support we find is critical. And without, in the past, without having a lot of communication, a lot of homework, going home, that type of thing, we feel like we lost that connection with our families and understanding what we worked at, that students were doing. So we're quite proud of that work. But today's presentation primarily focuses on those foundational skills of ELA and math. So we'll speak to those a bit. For our data, we see a strength in both I Ready across the grades and in MCAS in identifying knowledge and ideas as a strength. So when they read a text, they can identify the knowledge and ideas. It's places where there's deeper connections that they see to both parts. So that more critical thinking, the author's purpose, the more inferential elements that are in stories are not places where our, our students are showing some strong affinity for. However, in the early grades, leaving grade two, so those early childhood grades, they are very strong. I already shows us in their phonological awareness, that's the ability to hear sound and change and manipulate those sounds in their phonics. So they can decode, they, they're good decoders. But whether they understand the words and understand the meaning of the text becomes more of a challenge as they make their way through. Strengths in the, our conceptual mathematical understandings are a little bit more, I would say, I think those, you take those a little bit with a grain of salt. Measurement and data, you don't see a ton of that in the everyday work that students do. There are a few questions that shows up as a strength in MCAS, but those aren't very many questions. And it shows up in I Ready, but I would argue the same, that, that's not as, it's not applied use of those as much as I'd like to see that applied. That speaks to the authentic learning that's part of our school improvement plan where we want more authentic learning to really, really assess whether kids can apply that measurement and data rather than answer just a couple of questions there. And also, numbers and operations is a bit of a mixed bag. There's conflicting data on that for I Ready. It indicates it as a relative strength. So kids' understanding and being, being able to manipulate numbers. However, when we look at MCAS, there's some vulnerability, particularly in understanding the relationship between multiplication and division when we start to get into mathematics, a little more toward the algebra side of things. It seems that that's not a strength that it projects in I Ready. When we look at areas of growth, there are many and we are aware. If we looked carefully, particularly on MCAS, we only were able to, we left two-thirds of our points on the table when it came to writing. We only garnered one-third of the potential points for written responses. When we looked closely at what that looked like for students, when we looked at specific student response patterns, we, we recognized that our kids are not writing enough and they're, they're not writing enough details and they're not writing in enough, enough depth for you to explain their thinking. So they're, they're answering the question fairly. Vocabulary development is always something a school should work on across all grade levels anyway. And it's always going to be an area of growth, particularly if students aren't actively reading or being exposed to a wide range of experiences and reading materials. So we did go to an anthology in our reading instruction materials, which does have a limited number of resources as far as the reading is concerned and not the breadth of reading that maybe kids have done in the past. Certainly if they're not reading on their. We'll, we'll talk a little bit about how we're attacking that vocabulary development in our, in our action steps. We, like the rest of the district, have an attendance problem. We had ninety-four percent of our kids are, are there. We've got attendance ninety-four percent. Forty-six percent of our kids were absent ten days or more. If you think about an elementary student, it's not because they chose to hit Dunkin' Donuts, I mean, way as. So they're not driving. That is a, that is a parent, family decision. Lots of ski families and lots of kids out on trains. Ten percent of our kids are chronically absent. And of that ten percent, the majority are in that highest needs categories. So they are kids that, that are living in poverty or that have, are in the high needs category. And that suggests to us that maybe those kids don't feel the, the connection to school that we want them to or those families don't give that connection. So that is some family work that we need to do on our side. At the very least, schools are charged with growing their students no matter where they start. And we didn't do that. And we all know in these communities that the greatest opportunities are in those inner title zones, right? Where, where the, the changes happen, the potential is great. And we know our kids are feeling safe and that they belong and appreciate it, although we didn't push them and grow them. And so we're taking a very, very close look at that. We've recognized that that is, and we're incredibly disappointed for the work that we put in. But we recognize that's, that's, that, that is a big misstep on our part. So the growth data from the MCAS indicated less than fifty percent growth. That's unacceptable. And, but the I Ready data shows a bit of a better picture that we are moving and growing kids through, throughout the course of the year. We, we don't want to be at fifty percent, we want to be higher than fifty percent. We know that and we need to look. We feel like we're a bit of a lens out of focus that maybe all of us aren't focused on the same thing. Somewhere on the foreground, somewhere on the background. And we just need to sharpen our lens altogether so that we're all focused on the same things and set our priorities correctly. So when we look carefully at action stats, so we added and we just presented a goal for our school council for an additional, a couple of additional goals on our school improvement plans. Those include, we've got developed, that we have developed team goals that articulate a continual progress and establish mastery expectations for mathematics computation, because that seems to be an area of weakness for grades K through three. And we need to build thinking routines into our grades four and five. So kids explaining their thinking more, getting that in writing, having more opportunity to really think deeply about problems. We're also adding, this is all under our district strategic initiative one, number four. We're also adding inventorying our mastery expectations for writing horizontally and vertically. Are we expecting the same things in vocabulary and language, in punctuation and grammar, and sentence complexity? Are we all, are we holding kids accountable and moving them along with that same accountability, understanding across grade levels? And we also want to inventory the types of writing that are currently happening across grade levels. What are the audiences? What is the length? What are the purposes of those assignments? If we're all doing very short, like, you know, what's the answer to that? And kids are writing one sentence, that's what we're going to get from kids over and over. So we need to do an inventory. So those are added goals that we just approved at our school council meeting last night. We are, I, I will say that one of the things that did not happen last year is we knew that there was an area of need in math in one of the grade levels. And traditional practice is that you concentrate your resources and your support people in the younger grade levels. Because the idea there is if you give them support in the younger grade levels, then they don't need it as they get into upper grade levels and you can avoid kind of the path to tier three. We did that, but, but we were not, we were not well structured to support the need in the, the math need that was in the grade level that we had identified in September. So that math need was not properly, we did not concentrate our resources properly for that grade. We are, we do have action steps to increase our vocabulary exposure, exposure through play, which is the way the kids learn it. So we have vocabulary parade coming up. We have morphology where we're talking with kids a lot about where the words come from across disciplines. And so that's one of those examples of sharpening our lens so that we're all kind of doing the same thing across the grade levels. And we are requesting budgeting and financial support to improve tier one instruction next year. And that is through coaching, professional instructional coaching. Because we're all doing things a little bit differently and that, that, just that misalignment is not serving our population well.
So at Memorial, we have some tremendously talented students and teachers. You know, students that are talented academically, but also beyond that. You know, music and arts, which is really great to see. It doesn't always show up in presentations like this. One of the things that we are very proud of is our accountability rating. It's slowly increased over the last five years. So this past year it was up a ninety-four percentile, which was the highest in the past five years for us. You know, as Heather mentioned, you know, no matter where you're performing, guess who wants you continually grow and improve. And so they set those targets for us and we've done a nice job of hitting, excuse me, hitting them. One of the challenges, most challenging things for schools is to take kids from the median expectations level on MCAS and move them up into the exceeding expectations level. And last year, from twenty-one to twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three, in mathematics, we were able to increase our percentage of students exceeding expectations by nine percent. And in ELA, it went up two percent in that same time period. Our fourth graders last year really hit it out of the park on MCAS and math. We had eighty percent of students in fourth grade last year meeting or exceeding expectations. And actually forty-one percent of our fourth graders last year were exceeding expectations. So we're really proud of the work of the teachers and students there. Then when we look at our I Ready data, in the spring last year, in reading, we had eighty-six percent of our students, that's K through five across all grades, at or above grade level. And then in math, seventy-eight percent of students in those same grades are at or above, at or above grade level. And you'll see in a minute, they, they definitely didn't start there, but that's where we really get by the end of the year. So as everybody's kind of mentioned, there are things that, you know, to highlight successes. And then there are definitely areas for growth, you know, things that we are certainly not satisfied with as, as a staff in a school community. So our meeting and exceeding expectations on MCAS and ELA decreased from the previous year by eleven percent overall. So that is something that we, that we need to address. A big area that has a really high ceiling for growth is the, the essay writing. So similar to what Sheila mentioned. So the ceiling's really high for improvement there. The, the idea development aspect of the essay writing, we were only able to grab forty-one percent of the possible points in that area. And then on the convention side, we're only able to get, grab fifty-two percent of the possible points there. So that's something that we're, we're definitely going to take a look at. You know, teachers have been talking about, you know, now that we've transitioned to a new ELA program, they're starting to see some of the areas with the curriculum that we might want to supplement. And that's, that's certainly an area that we want to take a look at. And that differential versus the state is just a little off trend for us. Typically, you were about twenty percent above the state average. And in those areas, it was only ten percent above the state average. So then you're kind of continuing that, that, that process of continual growth. So the students that we have sitting in front of us right now in K to five, so this fall data collection for I Ready, we have fifty-seven percent of our students at or above grade level. That's a little bit higher than the students last year in the fall. Last year, we had forty-nine percent of the students were at or above grade level and then we got them up to eighty-six. So we're hoping to get that, that eighty-six number even higher this year. And then in math, we have thirty-four percent of our students at or above grade level in grades K through five, slightly above where we started last year. Last year, we started at thirty-two percent and we were able to get them up to seventy-eight percent. So we have, we have, you know, big hopes that we're going to be able to get those numbers up to, you know, that same growth level or higher this year. So in terms of action steps, we're doing a lot of curriculum work across district with our counterparts in Essex, among our grade levels as well, to align our curriculum and then identify curriculum inconsistencies or even with our, within our own practice gaps that we may have. So in our curriculum materials, in our, in our pacing and our spoken sequence, there may be some areas that, that need to backfill in terms of our, our curriculum. And then also just sharing of best practices. So that curriculum alignment process has really brought educators together to identify best practices and then kind of sharing these best practices. So I think that's going to, that's going to give us great results in the long run. The other big collaborative project we have going on is the NEASC accreditation. So again, sharing best practices, but also aligning our practice to recognize accreditation standards. That, that process is a little more on the newer side. We just kind of kicked that off this fall and about to really ramp that up. So that's been a great process again for, you know, really embedded professional development among our teachers. Last year, we implemented MyPath, so it's an aspect of I Ready where it gives you, gives each student an individualized learning path that they can, that they can follow on their software. We started around this time last year, just having teachers pilot it. Uh, we started around this time last year, just having teachers pilot it with one or two students. Um, and then m- most of the classes really kind of took to it and um really almost instantly um increased to uh most or all of their class. Um, and by the spring, uh, there was a pretty uh, uh, pretty strong implementation. And I can see that um increasing um this year now, it's a little more familiar to people. Uh, so our literacy and math specialists um are, um, as a district are a part of um tier one data-driven um conversations. Um, so not just kind of, you know, one presentation on one day or one data meeting on one day, um, but really working with the classroom teachers so that they can, um, they can kind of better understand the data um that their students are producing and then kind of driving that data, that data up. Um, and then again, as Sheila mentioned, we will also be um requesting um financial support to improve tier one instruction. Um, I mentioned embedded professional development, uh, that is the most effective um uh professional development when it's i- embedded in the work that teachers are doing every day. Um, so and not just, you know, going to a workshop or a training, um, but actually having it be a part of their every day. Um, so I'm having some um, some instructional coaches that can come in um and work with our staff to improve, uh, you know, really raise the bar for everybody um tier one and which will also improve tier two and tier three as well.
So while I want to pause and just revisit these strengths that were shared at the beginning is just, um, it's really exciting hearing the building leaders. Like, we clearly have the right people on the right places leading these buildings towards the work. And I think that honest conversations we're having and the difficult digging in and the owning our next steps. It's it's, I'm really excited to be part of this team because I think we've just got the right folks ready to do the next steps. Um, so you've heard a lot of these different components as as significant strengths. So I don't want to, you know, revisit all of them. The one piece I would say that high performing areas and programs, you heard examples of. There are specific pockets that we see some really significant strength and trends that we've seen over time. And so it's not just what do we need to fix, but also how do we replicate and it's spread out the good things that are happening here in our, in our district? And how can we learn? You've heard some examples of how we're doing that. And continuing to do that work is really an intentional piece of of the strengths that are happening. Um, but the other piece I'll say is district data systems. You also heard a commitment to continue to grow those. Um, but I think the fact that your, your district, even in previous years, when we talked about data, we're not only looking at MCAS, but understood there's a lot of information we need to use and there's a commitment to continuing to do that in an ongoing way. Um, that's a real strength for our system so that it's not, it's not a surprise. And now we take it forward. So we're not just admiring a problem, we're taking action steps to move forward on that work. Um, and these are the areas of growth that you heard, again, come from a lot of our principals. So I don't want to, you know, overly echo. I think that first one, that effectiveness of the tier one curriculum and instruction, um, really thinking about that consistency and coherence. So do our students in a similar grade level, having a similar shared experience? Um, and then that coherence is as students progress through, what does it mean to be a mathematician in Manchester Essex schools? And what can I expect? And what is that level of rigor expected by me? And then what do I do with, if I'm not being, uh, my needs aren't being met? So that we have consistent experiences horizontally and vertically, um, and that that's, we're crossing disciplines as well. So that tier one, that our responsibility to all of our students is really where we're focused. And you've heard a lot of our conversations, um, and and we're, the data's really charging us with that being our our primary focus. So, um, these are other pieces that you've heard us talk about, um, so I don't want to hang on those. Um, I did just want to name some of our our next steps. And um, I was really impressed, like, I I could continue to dig into the data. But the reinforcement was the work that has been laid out in the strategic plan is really, is is really setting that path forward. So what we saw is a reinforcement of what we need to do. And so it's it's exciting to see, like, we know where we're going. And there's a commitment, um, that's already taken place to lead us there. And so with with that strategic initiative one, number one, some of those next steps that we are really committing to is that coherent, standard-focused, authentic learning experiences. And how do we do that? That is, as you've heard, a lot of that curriculum work. That's, it's started, but really making sure we're focusing in on those areas of need with curriculum mapping. What do we do? When do we do it? How do we know if students are meeting their needs? That interdepartmental work you heard examples about, our curriculum review processes. When we say that, what we're talking about is like, are we sure our students are learning? Are we meeting the standards? Do we know what the standards are telling us? Um, do we have the right tools and resources? Have we been effectively trained to do that? So there's a lot of work that's taking place to to continue to move forward. But this data just reinforces where we need to focus. For some of these other, the professional learning, I do, I do want to reinforce that piece of that idea of, um, when you know better, you do better, right? And 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 as um, as expectations have changed from the states, um, shifting standards, increased bar ways on assessments, um, as our students in front of us, their needs have changed. Um, and in our our educational field gets more and more complex as we as professionals are on a continued growth process as well. So how do we do that? We do that through research and understanding, through professional development and training through collaboration. But also, when you think about it, any player on a, on a sports team, you do well in practice, but you only do well if somebody's really helping you move forward with those places that you might be stuck. Um, and the same is true in a lot of professions. So how do we provide our staff that targeted support, just like we would want with our students? So that's, that's a place that we're really looking at is like, how do we make sure that our staff have all the tools they need and that training is important to move forward in their experiences? Um, and then the district data protocols, making sure that we're not just admiring the data. You can look at a bunch of slides and look at a bunch of graphs and go back to your classroom and do the same thing. And that will have no impact on our kids. So how do we move it from this is what it says to, and now what are we going to do about it? So you've heard a lot of examples about that. This is a small sample, you know, we could need for seven hours to get more in detail. But that's that ongoing work that we're really charged with is to to making that commitment to move all of our students forward. And then some of these other pieces that you'll see with the strategic initiatives, two and three, I will reread them. But you've heard of some of these pieces of like continuing the work that has already taken place. And then looking at what is the data telling us where we're not meeting those needs? And what does that mean for our attendance commitments? Um, what does that mean for us continuing to expand our SEL program to ensure all of our students feel connected, safe and engaged? Um, and how do we make sure that our instructional routines and our professional practice are supportive of all of our students? Make sure we can continue to grow, um, because that's, that's the work that we're charged with, both as our commitment and responsibility to the students in front of us, but to the community that we serve as well. Um, so I think you hopefully heard that unifying message that we're, we're really here and we're eager to continue to push the bar forward and and help our students have that exciting engagement and opportunity to really continue to grow. So, um, that's it. I know we went a little long, but thank you for the chance to to talk about the work that's been taking place.
Thank you. Um, I think that was incredibly comprehensive. And as someone who's been sitting here for a few years doing this, and some of this was very new to me, the vocal, um, you know, results. But some of this was very new and I'm really appreciative of that. I think also the, the length of the presentation speaks to the input that we sent in advance and all of that. We've, we've seen that in the past, that when we are very eager and engaged with something, the presentation tends to grow and expand. So, um, the hope is that some of our uh questions and concerns were answered within that. Given that we do have, um, not only further conversation on other items, but another presentation happening tonight. I'm going to limit this to one round of questions. And by questions, I mean one per person. We're, we're going to have to show a little bit of restraint here. We don't know how we do it.
Teresa, can I add?
Yes.
And
Yes.
All those questions that you have, please continue to send them. So this is clearly, I'm thrilled to continue to engage about data. So like, make sure, like, we are happy, like, if you collect and submit and share, we're, you know, the, the more that we can make sure that we're having this transparent conversation, the, the better it is for everyone. So, um, even if there's just one tonight, um, we're happy to continue the dialogue in virtual and in other ways.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, very appreciative of your ongoing willingness to do that. So I will set an example. I've got about fifteen questions in my head, but I'm going to limit it to one. And I'm not even going to do what I often do, which is like, I have a three-part question. I'm going to limit it to exactly one question with one part. The thing that stuck, and I won't even like lead in in a big way. The thing that stuck out to me most was right at the start, this sharp increase in our high-needs population, a, a jump from five to then ten percent in the same timeframe that we've been having these budget conversations about decrease, decrease, decrease. I'm not saying they're related. I'm just saying it's interesting that that does happen at the same time. And so you're doing more with less at the moment or being asked to do more with less. Who are these kids? We don't have a lot of move, I, are we, are we, I, is this COVID leftover? I, it, what is the sharp jump in the high-needs population? Where are we finding this? It's not English language learners.
There has been a slight jump in English, but not like, not a jump to stay.
Not ten percent of the population.
So of the, the most significant increase for this cohort is in the low income.
Okay. So that's where we're seeing the changes.
And honestly, um, they're the students that are, are in front of us all the time, every day. And I think there's some of these pieces that, um, you know, I think the, the variability of the learners in front of us, I think this just gives us a, this might give us a way to be more mindful of it and to disaggregate the data. But, you know, they're the same students that have been here forever. And it might just be that we're able to capture and reflect them better. Um, and it's also a, a place just for us to be mindful of the fact that if, if something we did isn't working the same, um, that, you know, it's not about you. It's about the students that we're serving. So, you know, I think it's, it's a nice reminder for us that we can't just assume to continue to give the same delivery.
No, I think that really illustrated it well. And I thank you to, to, for me to understand how improving tier one instruction is required because the student population is markedly different. So thank you.
Interesting conversation about. I think the assessment is we maintain the same lever, level of rigor, standards and expectations, but we haven't adapted practice to the changing students in front of us. So we're having less of an impact on helping them meet those standards that were set up. So I know, yes, I thought that was something worth noting.
So that is my one question. Who else has? Any, that was as succinct as I've ever been. I've been, so if you need a moment to pull it in, anyone else?
So I was gonna comment on this. Um, this is very important, um, but what also struck me was the absenteeism. And we talked about the family engagement. So the way I see it, it could be a combination of really parents might not know so much that kids are coming late, split up to school late or they're absent, or they, they know and they just don't care. And so how are you dealing with those families, uh, I guess on both levels? I know we, you all kind of touched on it, um, to some extent, but what's, um, what, what's that conversation look like before it gets to the probation officer?
So in many cases, since I had a lot of conversations in the probation, um, it's mental health issue. Um, and we need to support the student through our school adjustment councils. Um, we did have a recent shift, our school adjustment counselor is working more in the tier two and three environment now and doesn't have as much time to focus on tier one, but she does her best and we bring a fellow in every year. Um, but uh, mental health services in, in a bubble at school, because we're supposed to help them with school-related issues, doesn't help students. They need an outside support. Um, and the waiting lists for those are very, very long. In some cases, it's just telehealth, it's not one-to-one services. So we are trying to support kids as best we can. But if there's no out support, outside supports, outside support for us to align with, um, it's, it's an uphill battle for the kids. So a, a quick answer is it's mental health and the lack of, um, resources in the world right now for that.
Sure. So which, so, so many of us could see, um, the, the role of the council is, you know, for people who are not in the know, they don't really know what they do on a day-to-day basis in this. Now you've clearly defined, you know, one of their, their roles. So in a budget, you might see them as an administrative cost, but really they are important to what you do on a daily basis.
Yeah, and it's a cost we have to cut back on. Um, we, we have, we had, um, our school psychologists at the elementary and middle school level used to help with that counseling. And now they are strictly doing testing. And the counseling, the tier one support is on the shoulders of the school adjustment counselors. So if you look at, you know, the, the ratio of student to counselor, it looks like we're good. You know, these numbers, we shouldn't need any more people. But the type of help that kids are needing now and their, and the time that that takes and the just working with families and supporting those families is, is much larger than it has ever been. So one student in need, you know, people are probably in a more than one student. Um, so that's, that's the precedent.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to address?
In, in terms of, I mean, it's, it's pretty similar in terms of high school, but I, I do tend to have students that drive. So there was, um, our first round.
With the timer.
We should be out there with the school resource officer.
We're, um, yeah.
We're in a lot of the cars.
And there definitely is, you know, to speak to our, the cars. And there, there is some tardies because of our traffic situation. But we do have the students that are driving. And I will say when our first round of, of letters that get generated go out saying, your student's been absent as many times. Of the twenty-five or so letters we sent, twenty more parents called and said, I had no idea they weren't getting to school on time. We are going to address this and fix it. So it, a lot of times it did seem like we came out of the gate and it was more punitive. Whereas these, these letters do get automatically generated right from the system. And it's, it's a great way to say, we need to start this conversation. You know, this is a letter saying, yes, they've been, but we need to start this conversation. Is this a matter of you need to wake up five minutes earlier? Or, you know, it's just one of those, and which is an important skill to learn. Okay, now you've, you've been late, now we're going to change that. Or is this something that is a little bit deeper? Is this an, a social emotional piece? Is this a mental health? How can we support you? So when those letters kind of came out, I think we were a little, it surprised a few people that we were sending so many letters out to students about absences, about tardies and that we were focusing on it. But it's, it's much more about, we need to start this conversation. I don't know that you need assistance if you're not telling me that. So a lot of people have adjusted, a lot of students have adjusted, made it in on time. But it has opened the door for us to just see where else can we do? And, and our average is, I think, ten absences for each, for our students. So they still do average ten absences a year, which is, which is a lot.
And just a quick public, public service announcement.
While we have you.
You don't have, people don't have to wait till they get the car in front of the door. There is no drop-off, so.
They drive me crazy.
Traffic on Lincoln Street.
I'm the guy.
Let them come and out of this, this traffic will just flow running.
I get it.
Well, yeah.
The, the other thing to note with, with the letters is we did pause them for a couple of, of years.
Right.
So, you know, two thousand nineteen, beginning of twenty twenty, we were sending the letters regularly. And then we had probably like a, it was like a two and a half year pause. Uh, yeah, yeah. So, um, and now we're, we're back to it.
That was John's question. Anyone else have a question?
Go ahead, Evan. Let me think about how to condense any one. Okay. Um, I think my question is about the NCAS, which I think is not everything, but is one of the data points for us to make a difference ourselves. Um, I'm pretty surprised to see both elementary schools are not doing so. And even compared to ourselves, previous years, especially third grade and fifth grade. And we're talking about we praise students by percent, thirty-three percent, thirty-three percent for the, uh, for the English, math and science. Um, and I saw that there's like a history improvement plan next step and all that. Are we doing enough to make sure that this is actually an improvement? Uh, and then last year I also asked the same thing, that are we tying the, um, somehow of the performance to the teachers evaluation? Does, would that help? And I understand it was a complex thing. Um, but how are we making sure that we are doing better?
I think, I think one of the things that, that we're seeing is right after COVID, we at the elementary level didn't see a sharp drop-off. Um, the kids that were in the older grades, um, they adapted to remote learning a little bit easier than, you know, the younger, the five, six, seven-year-olds. Um, so we are starting to kind of see that come up now and to that point of the, the landscape changing and the students that are, that are in front of us changing, you know, we need to, we need to adapt. Um, so, so right now, obviously, you know, based on the data, we're not, um, and so that's why we've been talking about, um, you know, instructional coaching to adapt our instruction to meet the needs of the learners that are in front of us.
Yeah, we're not doing that. There clearly are gaps. And to be honest, the, the interventions that we're providing, particularly in the upper grades, get tricky to close that gap, right? In the younger grades you're supporting because the gap is smaller. But as the gap gets larger in the upper grade levels, it takes more to close that gap. And twenty minutes or thirty minutes even of meeting with a student, you know, a couple of times a week, isn't going to do that. So we have to look at that system and figure out what, what, what is it going to take? We, we actually have started earlier in the day. The day doesn't start till, at elementary school until eight twenty-five. And we're seeing kids at eight oh five, the minute we can get them there or earlier, we can drop them off. We're trying to look at extending the day for some of the kids and finding support there. So, um, just trying to get it in is definitely a concern. Um, I think the walkthroughs are also giving us, um, some talking points about what our expectations are and what we're expecting to see. And to your point about teacher evaluation, that will help inform that a little bit. Because, um, you know, you know what you know, right? So if you are only seeing it done one way and you think consistently, well, the kids are going to get it or they're not going to get it. And then you see another classroom where it really, you know, the, the skill set isn't very impressive. It changes your view. So I think that those walk around, the walk, the walkthroughs that we're doing are going to help with, with really, um, raising the bar for everybody.
The other piece I would add is that it is not one, Tim kept texting me like, what's the thing you're seeing? What's the one thing? I was like, it is not one thing. There's The other piece I would add is that it is not one, Pam kept telling me like, what's the thing you're seeing? What's the one thing? I was like, it is not one thing. There's pockets. Um, of strength and there's pockets of need and they're not, it would be so easy if I was like, oh, here's the one problem, here's the one program. If there's a lot of places for us to examine. So it's both. What's it look like for the whole, for tier one, for the instructional delivery, for all, but we also know that there's particular students that are that we're continually not meeting their needs. So what does that mean? And what does that mean for us within the classroom? What does that mean for intervention systems? How are we measuring it? So we're not just reacting, but we're being proactive. So it's it's so multifaceted that there isn't a singular place or a singular person or a singular content area. Um, that's really why you're hearing these really, the these long lists because there's big picture, there's medium, and then there's really targeted supports that we're really. Confronting it from all different places. Um, and I think, again, that's sort of that ongoing work and that iteration of making sure that it's not something that. We're not surprised by, that we understand what's happening and that we can then make a really strategic action plan for it. But, you know, starting to. You heard a lot of different things that we're doing, but even getting more narrow and talking about like all the different pieces that are happening in each grade, in each school. Um, that's really what your your principals as instructional leaders, that's part of what they do. They meet with teachers and they set their professional learning goals and they provide that. Feedback from conversations, they look at the data with their with their staff. So um, that is a really critical part of this work is that you're building leaders acting as those instructional leaders with their teachers as well.
My question builds on um, Anna's. Which I was having trouble articulating, but I think that um, you all brought up some really relevant points. Um. So those targeted supports that you're talking about, Heather. I I see. The issue that Sheila brought up about the younger kids getting the direct interventions because. That it's where they're most effective, right? The gaps become harder to close the older the kids get. What do the targeted supports look like in our older cohorts where we have these gaps that have now. Gotten bigger and bigger over time. So. Because I have a sixth grader who was that, who was in this E S fifth grade class last year, I know. Of some, I know about that gap, right? We have a class that. Only had twenty four percent of the class meeting or exceeding the expectations in that. So. How are we providing support in the older grades such as that as an example, but not limited to that? To close the gaps. Knowing that we are also strengthening the tier one instructions so that we won't hopefully see those same gaps in the future. Seven cents.
Yeah, I think of a, I think honestly, my my first reaction is like, I would add some questions. When? Who? And with what specific strategy?
Well, I was only allowed one.
Um, and so I think this piece too is so that, you know, last year was that first year shift um, that this district took on when they're looking at that MTSS and that tiered instruction, moving it to that district and shifting away from more traditional intervention delivery. For that tiered support. So we talk about tier one, there are interventions and strategies that can take place there in addition to that tier two, which might require more strategic and 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 some more time and tier three, which is the most intensive. So. When we see your tier one, what I don't mean is just straight up class delivery, right? There are interventions we're expecting to take place there. Which includes knowing what my students need, where might they need some some acceleration in their work. Um, a lot of the idea of gap closing was something that um. What we didn't want to do as a as a field, right, was make sure that like, well, you you missed this part, so I'm gonna go back and teach you that. Um, and then they get you caught up, which would mean our students were inevitably always behind. So that real focus is on the idea of that acceleration. So you're here in my sixth grade classroom right now and I'm noticing you don't have these prerequisite skills. So how am I making sure that I, as that classroom teacher and providing you that access and that scaffold of support while also making sure that you're not. Not accessing the grade level standards. And that's complex. And that's really where that comes into that play of like. What's our data telling us for those instructional moves we can do? When are they taking place? So it's a really um, complex answer that we're confronting in a lot of different ways. And that's part of what we're doing is building those systems. In addition, that MTSS work that took place was primarily started at elementary. So that's one of the pieces that we we need to do is grow that program so that we're really being clear about. Not only that our classroom teachers are providing that acceleration just in time remediation, but also that for those students who require more. We're able to really make sure that they have access to that support. Um, but that's. That's building those systems and and those supports that that's work that we're doing, we know we need to do, but we're not there yet and we're working on it and we know that we need to do that piece. So.
So are interventionists. Currently only in our elementary schools?
So a concrete middle school answer, we have a point six. Interventionist or students on five oh four and general education students. That is when the tier one interventions are not working. We identify those. Through the student support team, um, which is myself, dean of students, school adjustment counselor, school psychologist and our interventionist, who is a point. Uh, for reading teacher, she does work in Gilliam reading instruction. So this will be a budget ask. Um, through the budget reduction, we lost a teaching assistant. In our learning center. Um, so we'll be asking for another, to put that position back so that we can have. Closer to a full F T E. Um, and that is where that's happening. Is that enough? Based on what we're looking at? Probably not. Um, but we will do what we can with the resources that hopefully we will have. And then see where we go from there.
So I don't actually have a question, but I want to emphasize a shift that I'm seeing here and applaud the shift. So if you go back one slide. Uh, to your, yeah, right there. So to me. To me, this is representative of a very important shift for us. That uh. Has been, I think, a long time in recognizing. So actually, Pam, if if you wouldn't mind pulling up the trend slides that I sent you and just scroll, scroll through while I talk. Because I think the. The key here is that first bullet, the high need student group, right? There there's no data in any of the packets here that really show that. And I think my slides would, but even if, even if we don't pull them up, the key here is that. We've had these gaps for a long time and not just since the jump in the percentage, right? And our our approach. To those students in a very generalized sense. Has been, let's put people for those students. And that's a kind of a costly way to do it. And so I think what we're, what you're representing, what we still may need to do, and to your point, we still may need some people. What we're really trying to say is let's address them in that core instruction, right? In that classroom where they are all together. Not being pulled out of. Other classes or other electives, right? The the kind of things that ideally kids want to be there for. If we're pulling them out for all those interventions because they're not getting what they need in the core instruction, then they're also losing out on the well rounded. So I very much appreciate that shift that you're talking about. I know it's gonna take some time to. Get it right or try to get it right. And I know that, you know, clearly there, those teachers need supports in making that work. But I think that is a very different type of support rather than just saying, we need people to sit with students or work with students. It's outside of the classroom context. So the only other thing I'll say about this slide is. I very much, to everybody else's point, appreciate the issue of attendance. I really hope we try to get at the why. Because if it's parents taking their kids out for skiing versus family challenges, home challenges, those are very different. Responses from from our perspective or policies that might be needed. And so if we can articulate the why of of what's happening there or understand the why. Uh, I hope that'll help inform.
Just a quick footnote on, and I appreciate Jake's observation that. That work in the shift does go back to um, the EDCO, special education evaluation, pair with the Hill. Program evaluations that were done back in the sixteen to nineteen time period, which helped us identify that. Something we had suspected that the RTI model that we were using was not effective. This helped us call that out and start that first level of moving um, moving the literacy piece forward, which took a considerable amount of time. So it's taken too long. It does feel like we're. Ready to break away a little bit. So thank you for observing that.
Right. So again, minding, we have a commitment to, so we're. We have a commitment to a nine P M. We have a presentation and a bubble tag for with action. So a question. Yes.
Um. I feel like I got swollen and I haven't even got it. Okay, so um, a very brief observation is that in looking through all of this data. I saw really great strengths that should be applauded in the S E L. Um, and I saw some real glaring challenges in the achievement and I was reminded of, Sheila, I'm gonna probably butcher this, but I think you said during our walkthrough. S E L is incompatible with rigor. And I think it's a really important thing, you know, we've we've had, we've all been through this experience of COVID and I think we just need to get back to remembering. That point because it sometimes there's a pendulum. In any event, my question is, when I look at the data coming out of Essex Elementary School versus. Memorial Elementary School, there's a million different ways to cut it, but it does show that there's. A significant difference. And my question about that is how that works in middle school, not only what you've spoken to already in terms of. The need to try to address some of those learning gaps and, but also how you in in classrooms that aren't leveled. So these students are combined, which is probably a good thing, but. Are some students actually, you know, is the pace of the class being dictated by the fact that we have this very divergent achievement issue?
Yes.
And so you have students who I am assuming are probably bored and and not able to um. You're you're having to teach to the middle. Yes. In a way that I think that's always going to be true in middle school, right? You're you're always gonna teach the middle, you have level classes, but. But this to me suggests a a real challenge when you're looking at an achievement gap this as wide as it is.
Yeah, I think. I guess be confident confidently that for the most part, the teachers aren't teaching to the middle. They are teaching here because if the bar is high, they're going to pull everyone. Um, our challenge does come with students who are um, beyond grade level. Um, I readies my path as an example of that. It doesn't go beyond eighth grades. And we have several students in seventh and eighth grade whose skills are up there. So the need to differentiate, the need to use a variety of tools in order to meet the needs of all learners is. Is great. Um, and we do have the benefit a lot of a lot of tools that we're using that two teachers are implementing. But it's um, it's it's challenging work, but it's the work of teaching. Um, and the work of teaching has become much more complex, given, you know, what we're seeing about our population. So our teachers, it's no one's fault. Yeah, they need support, they need training, they need coaching, um, you know, hence the requests for some coaches, hence the. Our desire to look at some of our stipend positions and see how we can restructure, um, because we need, we have an obligation to meet the educational needs of our teachers in order to meet the needs of our kids.
If I, and if I could add, a big piece of the curriculum work is like high quality curriculum is curriculum that all students in that class are gonna have their needs met wherever they're at and move forward. And so the more that we can look at. You know, our curriculum decisions and our instructional routines so that um, that work is engaging and pushing students forward regardless of where they enter and moving them not only to that grade level expectation, but forward from wherever they entered. Um, in part, that's like, what is a complexity and opportunity for those problems and how are we making sure that that problem is a low floor and a high ceiling? So wherever you're entering in, you can engage and push your work forward. Um, what is it that that teacher is doing to move that student understanding forward while also capitalizing on the fact that different learners in a room can actually create more. Complex understanding of problems that other students may not have because they haven't had to work through it. So there's actual. Increased capacity in tier one that actually uh, help all students learn while also improving our practice through that curriculum routine as well. Um, so, you know, I think that that winding, that winding performance actually allows us to be better for all.
I'm gonna jump in with just a real nuts and bolts piece that doesn't get mentioned enough, which is. We spend a lot of time on, I've got class size and you know, there's all kinds of research pro and con out there, but there is a very big reality that. When a student leaves the fifth grade, they're in a class of twenty students. They now become part of the sixth grade where we have one math teacher that's responsible for ninety students to a hundred students. And knowing all of the different profiles and making all of the adjustments when within each of those classrooms. So. While class size may not stand on its own, um, with a good um, research base to support it, I think there's a common sense approach that keeping classes reasonable. In helping and finding ways to support these teachers who are trying to close gaps within their own classrooms. But also managing a high volume of individual kids during their days. It's something we have to bear in mind and keep in mind when we're scheduling and we're planning our resources.
And I just want to be very careful that if we don't portray this as a sending town issue. I think there are, if you look at the data, there are just about as many high need students in Manchester Memorial. Performing at about the same level as those same students in Essex. So it's not necessarily just a town thing, but it's the, you know, student need issue.
Yeah, I certainly wasn't trying to suggest that there, but I I do think, to me, I'm looking at the accountability data and it's. Um, twenty one percent at Essex Elementary and seventy one percent at Memorial. So I am, I'm I'm pointing to data, I'm not making any judgments about. About the towns or the schools, but there is. You know, there's. There's numbers.
Chris and Diego.
Yeah, I'm good.
Chris is good. Diego, you have any questions?
My third year.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is, yeah, this is very, very helpful. Thank you.
And if there are additional questions, we really would be happy to to continue to explore and dig in and and.
Come back.
Share.
Group, Pam, we'll have you back.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks.
For all your hard work.
Be careful with the report. Thank you.
Okay, we are on to the. Chris, your year twenty four uh, budget, uh, fall budget to actual report, and we do have transfers to go with that. So. We will do this in as abbreviated a fashion as we can, but recognizing that this is something that requires action on our part. So, Abby?
Good, uh, thank you. And uh. Request to accelerate, we'll accept it. Um, so, yeah. So um, I'm gonna, just because we have some visitors and this will all be posted on the web, um, in fact, I'll just give a very quick overview and then get right to their requests. Um, we take, you know, this time to do our first budget to actual look. Uh. You know, you hear questions about like this quarterly. A good idea, certainly, you know, public publicly traded companies, that's how they report things. The reason um, I've always thought that this was. The best time to do your first one is because at this point you really have the most important data that you don't really have over the summer, which is staffing, largest expense. Uh, and you of the staffing, uh, the portion that are salaried um, is really known at this point. So putting aside, as I noted in the memo, hourly stipends, things like that that can vary through the year. You have incredible visibility to a big chunk of your budget at this time. Um, and our data is going through the first two months, you know, really in September, you do have some. Some shift in changes. Uh, it also allows us to finish closing out the school twenty three. Uh, so, um, as you know, getting into end of year report and all that, that's to uh, end of September. So um. It's important to give us that opportunity to make that accounting thing happen, which we're glad to say did. So um. The other thing that you have with the staffing is just who's on the benefits and the benefits tend to run out too. So. Uh, while there can be changes during the year, people who have life circumstances, they come off a benefit plan or people who age in, for example, our Medicare supplemental plans, which can bring in some savings, that type of thing. Um, and personnel that may come and go. Particularly maybe in the teaching assistant, special ed area where some of those things happen on a need base, and I talked about that in the report. Those two items really, you have a lot of visibility. So great time to get the update. Um, and um. I guess just hitting the the high level notes, we talked about um, the personnel being about. Looking at this point about one percent to the good, um, which is two hundred and fourteen thousand. Um, you know, we've had some years recently that have gone down, uh, you know, into the, you know, high five figures. Uh, so this is a little better than we were at um, for a couple of years, um, but it's still not a lot necessarily. It's still, so I would say something we want to be watching. Um, and there are several categories where we, you know, will, as I mentioned, look at it later. Um. And then um, there really aren't, you know, for budget transfers, this is where we don't change the total budget amount, but we ask, if we see an area where there could be an overage, we ask for you to increase the budget allotment from savings and other areas. So as you can see, there aren't really a ton of areas where we're seeing overages right now. Um, but we did identify them with transfer requests. Um, one was on the um. On the payroll purchasing clerk position, which we know has been open for a long time, uh, and that's. And that's been a detriment to our financial operations. And it's been noted by the auditors, you know, for years. And despite the fact that our audits have become much cleaner and our management letter has become much smaller than when, when I started and all those items were really full thick. They still note that timeliness and being able to close the years faster, all the things that people want, really is dependent on having that support system. So we were able to fill that position. We have a new person who's here who's amazing and doing a great job. It was right on track in terms of the rate with budget. So we're gonna have to increase the rate. But having a full-time person is allowing us to, it's just hard to find a part-time person who's skilled. And this is at the clerical level, the financial compensation level. So this is not a, you can see the transfer amount. This is not a high, you know, a management level position or anything like that. It's purely a clerk. And then the other areas really were in the operating expenses. And one was on the benefits area where we are looking to be a little bit light. And I talked about that, we're actually tight, as tight as we've ever been on healthcare at this time, looking around 30,000 to the good. We did bring the number in to, you know, one of the benefits of having a late-breaking budget was able to have our healthcare number in hand. So that really helps us to break the number down to the 393 level that we already knew about. So we don't have a lot of money there, 30,000 to the good. You know, one family plan could eat that up if you have a person come on board or close to that maybe, you know. So we have to watch that. The others were really just in insurance areas that I talked about, where we've just had more than normal, but not significant costs and deductible charges. So, and then the other area was an added district placement where we've been truing up based on, you know, we do a student by student analysis. So those are the areas and we had certainly the savings, as I mentioned, on the personnel side, to be able to fund those increases. It's 104,000 up on the operating expenses and 104,000 down on the personnel. So those are the transfers in that next to last column. I'd like to ask the school committee to vote and approve. But I'm sure you may have some questions before you do that. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you do that.
So why don't we take clarifying questions, then we'll adjourn the motion and have discussions. Are there any clarifying questions for Abby on the transfer?
Yeah, and I forgot, before I went into my thing, I have like slightly larger printouts if you guys want them, because I know some of them are hard to see. I'm happy to pass them around. You do?
Clarifying questions then?
The insurance, like you mentioned?
Yeah.
40,000? And I think in the nose of appropriations?
Property and liability is one program that we have. So we have health insurance, but then through the Maya collaborative, we have local workers' comp plan. And we have a property and liability together plan. So this isn't the property and liability.
And that part was greater than budget?
Yeah.
Those costs are just increasing everywhere. Yeah, it's the state of the market right now.
Yeah, and to that point, we do our annual review, we can transfer provider. You know, they did say, for next, you know, typically we, those lines have been like 2.5% borrowers, we have very low claims in terms of property casualties. So we've done really, really well. And, you know, we're fine if they try to keep. We had a little bit of an uptick, but I would not say a catastrophic uptick. So we're still, I think, looking good. But they did warn us that the 25, whole business is going to be going higher. And, you know, on the property side is things like, you know, water warming, flooding, all those types of things where the reinsurance market is getting nailed. And even though we're doing well on health insurance, I think we heard at the collaboration meeting that, you know, the market rates, you know, they're talking about 10% increases. There was a big Wall Street Journal article about inflation in the market. It's very early for us, but we do have a conference call with our broker this week where I'm, because we're starting to look ahead to the fiscal '25 budget. So where we can kind of dive into our claims utilization data. And we'll do what we can to budget tight, but conservative.
Any other clarifying questions? Okay, then I'm, all right, remind me if I can, if I'm getting this right. Then I move that we authorize the budget transfers as noted. Is there a second? Any discussion?
Overall comments? When we are looking at 2024 budget transfer or budget revision, as we're going, we should have a year, 2024 year, and so we can do comparison. I know that last month, when we had the school committee, we voted that to not do that because you were working on the state reports. I think we should have the end of 2023 numbers by line item like this. So we can compare to see the budget transfer is kind of in line, not in line with last year.
And I think that would be a doable thing because our end of year report data is in and we use that data to populate our, we're starting to send out already our budget request for '25 to the budget managers. And we look at, we show them where the budget to actuals were. So we gave you guys the preliminary look, but I think that that's something, it's a good idea. It's something you can do.
In addition, I think going forward, if you have the budget revision request to the school committee, you should also provide the changes, if any, for the transfers on the revenue side. So we can see the full picture, it's not just the expense. Also, the reserves. So that way we can get a better picture. Another comment is just overall, is basically the transfer and the forecast. He's saying that we're going to have $106,000 less, no, $104,000 more in operating expenses. But on the salary side, it's actually 210 less under budget basis. So we didn't transfer, the request for transfer is only to match the one before. So our total will be the same. However, it's misleading on the budget line item on the salary side. Because there are some things that are over or under, let's say 20,000 here and there. But we are not adding it to that. We're not changing it just because it goes over the 104. My point is, if we are going to be building to that 24 budget, now if we're finally doing, building to the '25 budget based on 2024, I mean, that's what we've been doing, just building budget, building budget instead of the, we should.
We don't build the budget based on budget. We may show it prepared to budget, but we build it based on actuals. So you may remember, one of the things we talked about previously was that you really want to do your budget to actuals before you do your next year budget look. Because next year's budget will be based off of this year actuals, not off of this year budget.
Sorry, correction. Yes, we are comparing to the budget instead of the projection, instead of actual.
On the top.
That's right. So if we were to do that for 2025, it's going to be misleading on the line item level. If we are only trying to transfer the amount matching the operating sign of what is going to increase. So I would recommend to do the budget transfer request to do exactly what you are forecasting. Park $106,000 in a, below the line, that the way that you have parking at the negotiation, like, you know, that line, whatever the line you want to call it. And that way your total is still the same, but each line is accurate to your projection. And therefore, when we compare to the 2025 budget, it will make sense. That's my recommendation.
And so that's, that is definitely a way you could go. I think just to put that in, in non-accounting speak, maybe, and it made perfect sense to me, but for anyone who's following along, I think, and is suggesting, if we know what the forecast is, should we adjust every line of the budget now and have any net savings at the bottom separated? So that we can continue to see where we think we are, especially as we go into budget. Am I stating?
For example, the principal line, the principal and system principles. We are forecasting 22,000 down less on the budget when I'm transferring down.
That's a perfect example, actually. Because with that example, you know, as we know, right now, we have like an interim person. So you could take that number down and then someone might be saying, well, why are you going to jack it right back up? It's really a question of approach. And I'm not saying one approach is better or worse. So I certainly take your suggestion as one possible way to go. But I think one of the reasons we haven't done that is A, you want to have, you need the statutory approval if you're going to go over. Short of that, we have wanted to kind of go through the year to see how we're doing. When we build the '25 budget, it's just important to reiterate, it will be based off what we have on staff today and growing that rather than basing it off the budget. So we will build it off of actuals, and we have done. So, but yes, if you, I mean, some, some people might want to change the ways presented. And I understand your progress for that.
So I just want to clarify though, for right now, the conversation is about discussion about approving these transfers for right now, not the way we're presenting them. I think that's valid and that's part of our bigger picture of how we want things done. But that's a conversation for another time about making a decision to change for the next budget to actual. So, but right now, we're in discussion about approving the transfers.
Right, I also have questions about the forecast, which is part of the question.
Okay, can you go ahead?
If we are, we're forecasting the personnel is going to be decreasing by, under the budget, by 210,000, 210,000.
Yep.
There should be a related health insurance related clause. If it's based on the percentage that in the past, it's roughly between 27 and 30%. So we're talking about 60,000 decrease, ideally under the health insurance law. But right now, the 49,000, like I mentioned, is only the increase of the property insurance, but not, not reflecting the potential 60,000, whatever that might be with the insurance.
I think I put it in the memo, it's about 30,000 right now. And it's also built on a name by name basis with a full run rate. So even though you might see a number that is, what did we say? About 200,000 to 14 on the personnel, on the forecast basis alone. Right now, we're seeing about 31,000 on the benefits. That's all we're seeing. And it's based on every person that we have, looking at all of their potential forecasted obligations on the district basis.
So why don't we include that insurance of the D groups?
It is in there.
Where is the insurance?
So.
Does it incorporate the 49,000?
Correct.
It will be. Because when I asked the clarification question, you said I just looked at insurance.
Okay, maybe I clarified incorrectly, I misunderstood your question. But yes, so all of those items are in that same category, is what I meant to say. But the 49,000 is not just that one item. That's the reason why that category. A lot of other categories, there are a whole bunch of items in there. Essex Regional Retirement is in there, Booker's Comp is in there, unemployment insurance is in there. So I, if I answered in a way that was not where I started.
It is in the memo, it's in the third paragraph.
Yeah.
And the business office increase of 25,000 to, you mentioned to have a one FTE. I remember in the 2024 budget process, just a few months ago, it's already part of the budget. It was. No, but we increased it to have it become one four FTE in the budget.
In fiscal '24? We haven't done any budget adjustments for fiscal '24 yet.
No, when we were doing the budget, developing the budget, and we can go back to the, I went back to the slides, that we were actually changed the budget to make sure that there's one FTE with that position that we part of.
Yeah, so I think there was, when we had a lot of ups and downs conversations, I believe there was a conversation about whether we should increase that. I don't believe that was increased in the budget. And I'll go back if I made it an error, and I would be happy to correct it. My understanding is it's not in the current budget and that that's why this transfer is required. I do recall that that conversation came up and was on the slides. I do not believe that adjustment was made, but I will double check and make sure I haven't made it mistake.
Because there were, this has come up before, that in the, in that conversation of what stays and what goes, something like, there were a few things that we probably need to, just be real careful.
I did look through this, but again, it's, it's possible that there's an error somewhere. I don't believe so, but I would be happy to check just to make sure.
Any other questions before we vote on the transfers? Okay.
And I appreciate your comments about like, how to continue to improve the presentation. So I think we also want to make it as clear as possible and as helpful to people as possible. And thank you for the suggestion.
All right, all in favor of approving the transfers as requested? Any opposed? Fine, okay, motion carries.
Just to clarify, is there, is there a problem with the presentation? The reason why you're opposed to it, is it, or is it just because you'd like to see a different presentation?
It's not a presentation, I still believe that at the line item level is not, we're not transferring items integrally. When we are picking specific lines and some lines are not, even though forecasting is less or more, we're not transferring those. And I guess it's because maybe some position is not full year and whatnot. But in my opinion, what you're forecasting to the specific, what you know is realistic, usually we'll transfer the budget to the realistic forecast.
Okay. All right, I have follow-up questions, but we can save them.
Well, I guess, so the other thing, I looked at our next meeting's agenda and it really is just budget development. We will have to add a piece in there about our goals, revisiting our goals development. So I think we should have considerable amount of time to go through revisiting some of this, if that's reasonable. But if it weren't for the fact that we have something else here to present, I think we could stay on much longer.
Thoughts about the, if we're talking about the teacher line at this point? Do you want? I'll hold it. Okay, all right. Then moving on, we will invite Ben Buttrick from the Essex Finance Committee. So this connects to our collaboration meeting conversation, which you all received the summary from. The bulk of it was spent discussing the potential of a third-party operational audit or third-party review. And Ben had volunteered to create some, a presentation of some sort or put together a proposal for our school committee to consider. So if you would like to, you didn't send anything in advance.
I did not, but I have a draft SW, which I'll distribute out.
Okay.
Statement. Where do you want me, if you want me to just?
Sure, right at your start.
Thanks.
Thanks. So do you want to just? So just for the committee coming out of the collaboration meeting, the reason that we added this to tonight's very cool agenda is because there are town meeting votes coming up. Each of our two towns is asking the voters to approve dollars to go toward an operational audit or third-party review, whatever you want to call it. They both are correct. And so we, we need to have some understanding of what was being proposed, so.
Thank you, Jerison. So thank you for including this on the agenda. And I just want to begin by saying that I'm not here on behalf of the Town of Essex. I'm not here on behalf of the Finance Committee. I'm here because I volunteered at the Budget Collaboration Meeting to kind of carry the torch forward on what is this and why does it make sense? So I just, and in an ideal world, our partners from the Town of Manchester would be here. I know they have like a free town meeting Q and A tonight. So I am, I'm basically, this is a work in progress and I wanted to kind of put it in front of you and hopefully get your engagement on it and get some discussion going on it. So just to provide some context, the idea of doing a district review was born out of the all-boards meeting between Manchester and Essex and the school committee. I think this undertaking would be extremely helpful to everyone. The district, the town, students, families, residents, et cetera. I mean, I think it is kind of human nature to say, well, you know, if, what is this? And, you know, does this make sense? And I know that there may be some skepticism, but I think having an independent third party come in, I think, would actually be very helpful. Since the formation of the district, to my knowledge, I'm not aware of any sort of operational view. That's the review that's been commissioned. What we're not talking about here is a, we're not talking about a financial audit. It's not forensic accounting. It's basically just a look at the management and the program structure and providing an overall assessment. I think it's good hygiene to do this. Some districts, when the regional agreement is open, will have an operational review as part of that transition. So the ask of the school committee here tonight is not a financial one, but it's really a request for partnership and collaboration. And I think in an ideal world, it would be great if the committee has some discussion and if the committee, the school committee here is supportive of it. to have one or two representatives as part of kind of a steering process for, uh, doing the review, we can talk about this, so. Let me just, first of all, let me just say, I drafted the SOW last week, I shared it with the chairs of the town boards in both Manchester and Essex. I really haven't gotten much in the way of edits back, so this is, I put draft on there because this is, you know, this is um, you know, maybe subject to change, so this is sort of what I'm envisioning in terms of what makes sense. But I also wanted to talk about why I think it actually makes sense to do that, and I think that's the more important part of the conversation, so. Just to speak to the what, I think the idea is, uh, you know, number one, identify expectations among stakeholders for what is most and least valued in the program offered by the district. And this could be accomplished through focus groups or surveys. I don't have a good sense of what's unique about our district relative to other districts in terms of, of what's valued, but I think that would be helpful, number two, to provide a summary assessment that will convey the extent to which the district's management and structure represents best practices or even common practices. I think that this would actually be very helpful for people who are sort of trying to decide when we get to budget season and taking a vote for the budget, you know, um, to make a judgment, and I'll talk more about that a little bit later. Number three, to produce, produce a list of opportunities and considerations for the district. Uh, so, um, the school committee and the district administration, uh, would determine whether to advance and or prioritize the recommendations in collaboration with partner towns and other stakeholders. So those are kind of the three raw components. The considerations as to why I think this makes sense. As I said, voters in both towns are going to be making a decision at their own respective town meetings about the school budget in the spring, and it may potentially also progress to a super town meeting. Um, it may involve an override depending upon where the preliminary budget actually lands. I think the intentions of the voters are likely on a bell curve, you're going to have people, you know, on one side of the bell curve that are going to be doggedly aligned with the district regardless. You're going to have people at the other end who may be questioning everything. But I think the reality is, most of the resident voters are kind of in the fat part of the bell curve. And to have an independent assessment to say, you know what, this makes total sense, here's, you know, here's what our review is, or here's what our findings are, would be very helpful for a majority of voters in both towns. So I think that, to me, and I would consider myself a consumer of this, because I'm trying to navigate the nuance in the middle, and, you know, to try and understand this, and I think to have to, to have from a third party source has a lot of value to me. And, and I, I think both sides would actually say that, I think some people are so dug in in terms of their view about the budget, either for or against, that they dismiss what the other side says. And so that, again, is helpful to have a third party, I mean, Major League Baseball does this in terms of the owners and the players, I mean, I do think that there's a lot of value, and I, I don't think, I mean, I'm not comparing us to Major League Baseball, but I think that, you know, this, um, it's helpful, uh, there's clearly difference between the towns in terms of what the program offerings and the rate of budget growth are or should be reasonable within the constraints of town finances. Uh, you know, as, as dictated by Proposition Two and a Half. So, I mean, my view is town officials really don't possess the expertise nor are appropriately positioned to make such a determination, and different segments of residents have different expectations and views, so. I'm hoping this would foster better alignment in terms of what we want from the district. Um, I also think there's political value just in terms of, is this dismissed or is this embraced? And, um, I know, so I just want to put, put that out there, so in summary, uh, uh, I don't know why anybody wouldn't support this idea of just having a third party assessment, and, um, I mean, our towns are divided, uh, your chair has made this point repeatedly in frustration. We've got a stuck structure as it pertains to the budget discussion each year. So I think having a slightly different process involved can help break the stuck structure in terms of, in terms of the budget discussions. So, I don't think either town's in a position to go it alone in terms of the, in terms of building a school district, so, I mean, I think both towns need each other, and I think this could actually help, you know, provide some unity, so. At any rate, that's kind of, in summary, you can read the statement of work, I just, uh, I think if you discuss the merits of this as a school committee, I'm certainly here to answer questions, but and I'm an advocate of it, I'm a supporter of it, but I don't consider myself the owner of it, I think this needs to, to come from, from both towns. So. Did that make any sense?
Thank you, Ben. Um, okay, so, um, given our time, I guess I want to start with asking the committee, um, are we we have committed to an end of the block end, this is a longer conversation than that, but we do need to have it, are we um, willing to engage in this conversation, um, just extend the meeting time, and is there anyone who needs to leave?
We have to, town meetings are next week.
Well, we have to, but we also, we, we need to choose to do this, so.
Can I say one other thing?
Yes.
Just about logistics, um, so both towns have it on their warrant to actually fund this next, uh, uh, Essex I know has it next Monday. Um, I don't think we need to have this, you know, completely baked and fully, uh, you know, fully finalized, because this is appropriating the funds, I think we need to be able to talk about what it is and what the benefits are. But I mean, it's going to involve a procurement process potentially if the providers aren't on, you know, state contract in terms of, like, we're not going to, we're not going to identify a provider between now and the town meetings.
Okay, okay, so we're recognizing that we're just going to engage in this and that we will not be done in fifteen minutes. Okay, so I guess what I, the way we, I'd like to structure this is for us to ask our questions of Ben regarding this proposal. And then for us to have our own conversation about it in the context of, of, uh, the thing, so if we have clarifying questions, I know I have. Um, but does anyone else have questions directly for Ben about this? Go ahead.
You mentioned that we don't need to have this baked before we go into the town meeting, and we don't have the time, however, the, the voters, uh, myself and voted, when I go to vote for something, I want to see points, so not just a concept. So how do you then convince the voters that, yes, we don't have the consultants identify, yes, we haven't gone through the RRP process, but this is the idea. Um, sometimes I don't know, I think the idea may still need to be somewhat big enough to convince the voters that this is the way to go, because I do think that right now um, some people might not feel that they are ready to vote for it without seeing the company. For example, the consultants that we do choose, what are some of the, you know, examples that are here? Uh, how are they helping other schools? So how do we know that this is going to be the money we'll spend, uh, if it's going to be between sixty, a hundred thousand, uh, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars? Um, yes, it's going to help, the district is going to help tell, it has all the different benefits, but how do we know that we've done that for the taxpayers, the money is to, we're utilizing, we're maximizing to his benefit?
Well, I think, um, are, are you saying that we should, that it would be helpful to have samples of reports or output?
I don't know, um, it depends on what the warrant says, or it depends on how you guys expect to, uh, deliver this information to the voters before buying, by next Monday or on Monday. I do think is, it does make a difference about, you know, people do more information, and that I don't think people are going to vote, and I, I, I don't think some people are going to vote for just, uh, the concept, the other overall idea, the person.
So can I, can I add to what you're saying there, so a, as an example here, um, in the summary, it would give it. So this is very different than what I was expecting based on the conversation, and by the way, you're a straight shooter, I, I know you're coming at this with genuine good, like, there's, there's no animosity on it, I just want you to know that. At the same time, coming out of that last collaboration meeting, I thought it was pretty clear that for us to have an effective discussion about whether we could whether this is something that we as a body want to support, and with subsequent learning from, from M A C and from, uh, District Council, I think we need to support this if it's going to happen, because to have access to the resources of time records and all of that, we, we really do need to be in support of this, so to do that, we need to understand scope, the procurement process, the timing, the expectations regarding results, those were the, the things here, like, what is it you're trying to learn specifically, so that we can have a conversation about whether that's something that, that we already have access to, that there's another option for, that, or some, or that we really want to get behind on this. So I'm, I'm a little, it feels a little premature, because we don't have that information at this point. And, but it, but a lot of that was shared in the collaboration.
But this is a little, I think this is a little bit of chicken and egg here, in the sense that you need to have something that's pretty well defined to be able to react to, to, to decide, do we support this or not? And, yeah, I think what I'm looking for is participation in, in defining that, so, um, I don't know any other way other than to start with more of a concept and more abstract, which is why I was putting something that's fairly general in a two-page document, and, and so, um, I hear what you're saying. I've just, I'm not exactly sure how to.
That's fair, it's just a step back from, this needs to happen, it needs to happen by February fifteenth, so that, so that we have this much savings, at least to recoup uh, the investment for the next budget year, all, so I'm just saying, it's a step back, it's a different trajectory than what we discussed at the collaboration group, so. If this is the, the direction we want to go, so this sounds more like starting at the beginning and deciding together about the things, is that? Is that what you're suggesting?
That's what I would like.
Okay.
Yes.
That's helpful, go ahead, Erica, then Kate.
Um, my, my question is just a practical one, having worked with a lot of consultants in my life, we're looking at less than three months, which include two holidays. The thing that strikes me before I get to any of the rest is whether this is realistic to bite off, and it's going to take a lot of time. I'm, I'm not opposed to this idea.
Yeah.
What I, what I am having trouble with is whether this is the right time to do it, because it's going to require a lot of district resources in order to respond to consultants' questions and so forth, at a time when we desperately need to be dedicating district resources to actually building a budget, and I'm just wondering if you have feedback that leads you to believe that this could happen this quickly, because to me, it feels really optimistic.
Yeah, I'm hesitant to set an expectation about timeline, what, I, I've had a couple of very preliminary conversations with firms, uh, uh, New Solutions, K twelve, Public Consulting Group, and Schoolworks are the three that I've spoken to. The, the three of them have indicated that it, it, it doesn't need to be a long drawn out process, that there's a period of data collection, and then there's a period of processing that data. I, I wouldn't sit before you and say we can deliver something by such and such a date, because for, for your, for the reasons you cited, Erica. So, I think helpful is if we could have some output by the and town meetings are happening, so in terms of having a report, uh, a final assessment.
To that point, knowing that the deliverable may or may not happen in time for it to be of use to us this year, should we be rushing a process if the goal is for the if the goal is for the report to be meaningful and to yield as much return, whether that's financial or information or whatever, it just feels as though what's the end goal here, right, are, are we trying to get something by February fifteenth so that we can make our budget and bring it to string town meetings based on this report?
I don't think so.
Or is the, well, then, so then if it's not, because it does, it says it, that's prior to February fifteen, so if that's not the goal, then I feel like we could be putting a lot more time and thought into this and making it. I feel like we wouldn't be talking about it right now, you know, like, I feel like we would have a much more comprehensive approach, like, not having sat at any of these collaboration meetings, my, my immediate reaction reading this most of this data should be available through public sources at DESI and from other third-party reviews conducted here to four. So then, well, we can get that, that's all publicly available information, but here we're talking about spending sixty to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to have somebody else get that information for us and put it into a report, I guess I'm just very confused as to how useful this will be, and if we want to make it as useful as possible, then it seems as though February fifteenth is not a realistic deliverable, deliverable date, especially considering that this, as it would include students, teachers, and administration.
It's not a question. Okay, so, yeah, let, let's, let's ask our questions, because then we have to discuss, we don't have to put Ben on the spot with the.
Well, no, I guess, I mean, I guess the question was, is February, like, is February sixteen, fifteenth actually the, the date, but I guess.
It's a fair, it's a fair question, I mean, I don't have hard data to represent to you that, I mean, you know, that it's feasible to do that. Because the process has to be better defined, number one, and number two, it's dependent upon what these firms say in terms of their schedule, so, I'll certain acknowledge that.
Yeah, no, I, well, I don't really have any clarifying questions about this for Ben, it's more. It, what, yeah.
Jake has a clarification.
Clarifying questions right then. So first of all, thanks for putting yourself in the hot seat here, you know.
Yep.
We're all friends. I am a little confused about the perspective of speaking for yourself and not for the other boards. How, how can this come out of a collaboration meeting and not have you be the representative of that work?
Well, what you see in front of you is representative of my work, so it, it's.
But you shared it with the other boards, right, have they, have they supported this, are they, are they advocating for this?
Meeting this Thursday again.
What is their?
Yeah, we do have a follow up.
So we have to. I think he, that he distributed to them and hadn't received feedback.
Okay, so you don't.
I'm not representing as something that is agreed to by all of the, you know, town board.
Most of us haven't been in the collaboration meetings, we don't have the context of it, so that's very helpful, thank you. So the, uh, some specific things here, I'll be much more blunt than Erica, there's no way that February, December is, is doable for what you're, what you're asking here, but, but a couple of specific things here. One, what is the purpose of, uh, the interviews and focus groups, um, relative to eight, you know, point of other kind of publicly available data? And secondly, um, there's, there's a point here at the top page too, which is, you know, the looking for greater efficiencies, still preserve the quality of your program, but not expect to see curriculum teaching outcomes is within the scope. You can't talk about quality of program without talking about curriculum instruction outcomes. So how do you, how do you just take kind of tease in that apart?
Well, I think s- some of the questions around, uh, structure and class size versus the actual, you know, curriculum itself that's being presented, I'm trying to say that this is not some, this is more about structure than it is about the actual curriculum.
Okay.
That I don't see the curriculum as, I, I. That I don't see the curriculum as I, I, that's not The purview of the town, but the structure as it pertains to The cost and the efficiency of how the district is run is of interest to the town.
And I, and I think I've made that same argument. So I appreciate that you're reflecting that distinction. I just wanted to be clear that That when we say program here, we're talking about the broader educational program.
Right.
Not the, what's happening in classrooms.
Yep.
But, yeah, that's fair. And, and the, the role of interviews and focus groups kind of the more, what's, what's the, what's the intent of having that more personal touch rather than a data one?
Well, when, in the last collaboration meeting, Pam was saying, well, we've done, we've done work to, um, we've, we've had studies actually done. So I think the idea here is If we don't have to reinvent the wheel, let's not reinvent the wheel. If there's material that can be leveraged for doing this, what I don't necessarily know are where the gaps. What would be helpful to know in terms of what's valued. And I think that work has probably been done as part of the strategic planning work in terms of What is the unified vision that people have? And I don't know enough to say, well, is there something about our strategic plan that is sort of different from What another district in a similar kind of situation might look like? Are we different somehow? And that's where I think people are trying to make. Uh, you know, they're trying to m- make decisions about budgets where, you know, we don't know enough about the program. So that's where the, I think that having the independent party is helpful.
Does anyone else have a clarifying question before we start our discussion? Am I allowed?
Yes, you may have a clarifying question. Yes.
Phrase we're using a lot lately is we need to name it. Struck, what is meant by structure? And are we going through an elaborate exercise to try and When there's an actual ask to be mad for a study?
I will name it. It keeps coming up over and over. The non-instructional class, everything, and it all keeps coming back to the administrators. That, that's, that is a thing that keeps coming. But we've taken that on separately. So I, I guess that's why I was going to bring it up in the, in the conversation. I'm, I'm not suggesting that that's.
Yes, I have questions for conversation.
Yeah.
You'll, you'll stay there.
I guess it was more cloud years. Like, what is, what are we referring to when we're referring to structure? Are we looking at the configuration of the elementary schools? Are we looking at whether or not we should be a middle school and a high school or a middle, high school? Uh, uh, are those are the structural pieces and?
Well, I would, I would say.
Follow-up. You can't necessarily divorce them from the program and desired outcomes.
I, I would say broadly speaking, I wouldn't necessarily rule one of those out. So in terms of How the schools themselves are structured between the two towns, how the classrooms are structured within the schools and how the, the The sections are laid out.
Is this all about class size? It sounds to me like it's all back to the class size question.
Well, that would be a component of it. Sure.
So Kim, all right, I think we're into discussion at this point. Okay.
So then there's, I mean, I guess. When we're talking about structures, what?
Well, no, the, the, you're probably in it. So I guess what I want to say is we want, we want to have the conversation and, and you're welcome to, to be here to be part of the, if we have clarified questions for you, but Our committee needs to have a conversation about whether this is something that, how we feel about all of this. So We clearly have things to say. Go ahead.
Well, I guess that. I hesitate to. I'm having a hard time understanding The value Of A third-party operational review, given this scope, because I feel as though We know the answers to most of these questions. So we're talking about structures, right? Could we run this district? With a lower overhead, if we only ran one elementary school, absolutely. That's one of the key drivers. That increases per people costs in a district is the number of schools that we're running. So that's a critical Question about the structure of our district. We know, being members of this community, that that's not just a question about the budget and that's not just a question about Structure. That's a question about our communities. And we know from having had conversations over The past decade, really, since we started talking about building a new memorial. That it was very important to the town of Essex to have its own elementary school. So I feel as though we could have a third party come in and say, Yes, we can do this in a more affordable way by busing all of the Essex kids to Memorial and building in addition on it. But I don't know that we can have a third-party person who comes in and Has the history and the context of our communities. That's really necessary. When we're looking at making that decision. But I also Think that when it comes time to talking about building the new Essex Elementary School, that all of these conversations and studies are going to happen anyway.
I will clarify that that will happen and can happen as a condition of usability. Right?
So I would like to, to build on what Kate's saying here. I actually think that, uh, That looking at things from a, a outside perspective is valuable, um, which is why Spent time looking at the reports that we've had, the, the ones that we've already had. What I was really hoping for was an understanding of what it is you want to know. I just want to know what it is you want to know, because then we as a committee can identify, do we already have that information available to us? If so, great. If not, then maybe we support this. That being said, we are where we are. This does feel different than, um, the way this conversation has come forward. And I would say, um, That this was brought up at the all-boards meeting for sure, um, by two people. But that was not where this was born. I heard this first brought up in a finance committee meeting, um, in the, in the spring. So this was, this was discussed as another Opportunity for How to make the budget work for our town partner that is having difficulty. So where I am with this is If, if we're going to do this, and by the way, I like that, I think that Taking a step back and having an entirely separate, um, outlook on this is a good idea. I don't know that now's the time for it. I, I like twenty-five is the nice round number to look at all of the things. Including the, the regional agreement, including everything. Uh, I, it's, it's all on the, on the table at some point. But right now, my concern is that this. The, the conversation had been, let's consider changing the apportionment formula so that we can Help the situation with Essex's apportionment struggles Be ameliorated. That did not get support. This seems to be the next way to attack that. This, this seems to be the next way to help Essex's struggle. I'm an Essex resident. I care about that. I think that if we're going to have a third-party review. It has to be us driving the vote. What I'm hearing is that our town partners have some people who, who may support that. Perhaps the voters will support that by saying we will put money toward it. But I think there are other options besides hiring for-profit firms To do this. I, I know there are other options. Um, we talked about just one today in D E S I. Can do this. So do you want to show?
Yeah.
Pam and I just before the meeting.
We were having a conversation about. There's a district review process that D E S I has re-implemented. Get the old name for it.
That's complying still, isn't it?
There's another one now that's Been
Reactivated?
Reactivated. It was the old, I just have the image of when they come in and take all the boxes from back in the day. It used to have a fairly negative connotation. I think they rebooted it. Heather's former district actually went through it. Our friends in Ipswich Just went through it. And we learned about it because someone put out on the list, sir, what the heck is this thing from D E S I? Why are they coming to see us? Anyway, long story short, we took a quick look at it. And we will, our number will be up shortly and it is a comprehensive, um, Review of all aspects of your, your district. But D E S I does it through a company called A I R.
So I participated on those reviews or other districts.
Yeah.
It is, it's slightly different than what I think it'd be an ask for. It is a program review, but it is not a finance. It doesn't Attach your Programs to the finances.
Okay.
At least, at least the way it was before. I mean, they have changed it. But it doesn't typically result in recommendations for how to modify for purposes of Efficiency.
So therein is the, we need to figure out what it is we're trying to learn so that we can decide what is the best way to get that information as.
This is just a consideration. If you wanted a third, a free third-party review, free is nice, of all aspects of the district.
Except you can't ask for it. They, they.
We couldn't, we couldn't ask to be advanced. We didn't ask to. No. We could see if they wanted to move us up.
But it, it'd be useful to get whatever they have as their current, because those, those all have kind of criteria and protocols with them.
Yep.
We should be able to get their current version of those to see what that looks like.
Yeah, there's the sample reports too. Um, this is kind of the, the process laid out. It's all there. I, I haven't dug deeply into it, but I know It, it's coming to us. So maybe it's something we can leverage. Um, they would get everything.
And it may not answer all of it, but that's, that's the question before us. Go ahead, Anna, and then Chris.
Oh, we don't need to have the answer now. And then those are all the questions that we all have. But I think the point of this. If, and that's why if we are reading this two-page, we're not going to find the answers. And I personally welcome the third-party, like you said, because I do think that for a thirty-million-dollar entity that we haven't had to review for twenty-three years. It doesn't, it will only help. It wouldn't hurt. Now being said, we need to Work together to build that scope, to build that deliverable, that, and then the expectations, everything that if we all are on the same page, I do think it's going to benefit everybody. I agree it's not going to be done before February fifteenth, but if everybody's on the same page, I do think if, if it doesn't have benefit to this budget process, it will have benefit To, uh, for the next few years. And before we even open the regional agreement. We, we need, uh, we need a, a third-party opinion about, uh, a lot of different things. And I do think this is going to help us Going to that direction if we ever want to look at the region. Um. In addition, I do think that Even though if this doesn't finish before February fifteenth, I do think the process Is going to help us with our budget, the thinking and whatnot, if we build it right. We can build different stages. We can build different expectation. There are different things that we can learn from the process as well. But I think as many people, as we know that The, the one that we, we work with, uh, consultants many times. Uh, it is important to say, um, to understand exactly what we want from them. And, and otherwise, so, so we're not wasting our money. But We are not gonna, um, we're not gonna know from this meeting before we decide how much we want to be involved. I do think that if we are not involved, we are missing an opportunity To really have a third-party opinion to look at things with us. And we always talk about how much we don't have resources, how much we wish that we have enough F T. Utilize that. All the different things that we want, we want to compare, whatever that might be. Let's see how we can use this opportunity to get the answers that we all have been asking for the past few years.
Hold on, it was Chris and then Erica. Go ahead.
So, uh, I have a lot of reservations about this on a lot of different levels. How, uh? How open should I be about that?
You should be open. This is the time to have the conversation.
So, um. So I, I've, I've heard people say that we haven't had a review like this, but We do reviews like this constantly And every year. And We are always in different ways comparing ourselves to different districts. Uh, there's a lot of data out there. I, I feel like we're very open about what our program is, what levels we support that program at and why we do that. Across the board. Um, so At a very fundamental level, but you know, you asked the question, I don't understand why anyone would be against this. This is not a committee thing, but just a personal taxpayer. I wouldn't want to spend my tax dollars on this. That's just me personally, because I feel like it's something that we continuously do as a school district. And I feel like that Unfortunately, for better or worse, where this is coming from, right, uh, is If this was such a concern of a majority of residents in the middle of your belter. In twenty-three years, why hasn't anyone asked for a third-party to do what we're already doing? You know, my perspective on this is that, uh, A majority of the people are, you know, three things, right? They trust our district leadership, that they are spending our tax dollars wisely within the school district. That they, you know, have a level of trust in the people that they elect to do this work and make sure that We are being responsible stewards to all three of our stakeholders, which is You know, the students in our district, the staff and all the taxpayers in, in our town. That's why we're elected. That's why I'm elected. I take that very seriously. To make sure that I'm always taking into account All three of our constituents, right, and our stakeholders. So The only thing that I can Grasp as to why we're asking for this now Is because, you know, our, our last year's budget, if, uh, and Let's just take the facts, right? So, uh, last year's budget Did pass at Manchester's town meeting. Last year's budget did pass at Essex's town meeting. And then the budget failed at an override vote that was needed by Essex in order to afford their part of that budget. And if just sixty people in Essex voted The other way on that, right, then that override would have passed, right? So in some ways I feel like, uh, Well, it's actually not just those sixty people, um, because Both The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee in Essex also did not Support the school budget. And even without support of the school budget, it still passed at town meeting. So I, I basically feel like this is stemming from And for Really what amounts to sixty people and sort of changing their minds.
I have to point a clarification that the override vote at the poll was considerably more than that in discrepancy. It was maybe.
It's like a hundred and twenty, right?
Two hundred. It was, it was.
How much was it?
Two hundred.
It was a hundred and twenty, I think.
Okay, wasn't it?
So, so sixty people that changed their.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay. So, um. Now. Conceptually, right? I love reviews. I, you know, like there, I, I see nothing wrong with doing a third-party review anytime because In the three years that I've been doing this, I've Again, been, I feel like I've been doing my job Pretty well, maybe not perfectly every time, but I, I know what this is, the outcome of this is going to be. It's going to be all of the data we've been sharing and Maybe, you know, a little bit more visibility into one area, but Uh, this really comes down to, again, what are we looking to accomplish here? And if, you know, the only thing I can think of because of the context around all of this. The only reason to do this is to try to cut costs. I, I don't really see another reason as to why Anyone would need a third-party Review. So maybe I'm wrong about that. I'd like some feedback on that because I'm Kind of confused as to why other people don't understand why we're doing this.
So I have to take the committee conversation first because I said that that's how we were going to do it. So.
Then Erica. I definitely want to, I want to understand.
I, I know, but.
We'll engage.
We're gonna.
I have a question and It will sound contentious and that's Not my Intention. Um, but since we're talking about doing this as a partnership and a collaboration between the towns and the districts And the district. Have the towns ever had an operational Review Of similar scope or anything similar? And if the question is, how can our towns Continue to fund this district? Shouldn't? Shouldn't a third-party review also include an operational look at the town budgets that are. Responsible for funding the district? And not, it's a rhetorical question. It's just something for everybody to, to think about because I. I feel as though without that lens, Chris is right, we are only looking at ways to cut corners and minimize. Costs as opposed to ways to. To fund. A great school district.
This is the thing I'm struggling with is that if there's a, if there's an ask to, to reduce the budget by a certain amount of money, just, I, I would rather just be asked. I, I said Erica and then Jake.
Both, um, good comments. I guess. Based on what Ben's saying and the district's involvement in drafting in our P, I would look at this slightly differently. Because I don't think I would look at it as our ask is to just reduce the budget. My goal, and I see a, a real tension here, but on the plus side, I think hopefully what you could come out of this with. Is all stakeholders reaching a bit of a consensus. Because since I rolled onto this committee, there's been a constant, um, tension and I feel like there's been a lot of questions and a lot of requests for information. I feel like we're providing the information, but it's not satisfactory. I'm not exactly sure, you know, where all the breakdown is, but there's clearly a lack of trust. And one thing you do have with a third party is objectivity, hopefully. So if you can create a list of goals that all three stakeholders agree upon, which, you know, I, I, I'm gonna withhold some judgment there. But assuming you can, you have this potential for trust and consensus building, which I think could be really, really useful. On the other hand, I totally hear you as a taxpayer. You know, what struck me is we're talking about spending amount of money and I think it may be the very amount of money that the town administrator said. That Essex is likely to come up short, I believe sixty grand, even if we were able to come in at two and a half percent. So spending sixty grand. That isn't available for the operating budget, even an operating budget that would be considerably lower than the natural. Um, if we assume that most districts grow around somewhere between three and four percent. The idea that we're going to have a consultant to tell us whether or not our growth rate, which is right within that average. Is actually appropriate when the money isn't there to fund that budget if we end up needing to fund that budget. Is questionable fiscal policy. So those are the two, for me, those are the two tensions, trying to pursue a consensus and trust versus good, sound financial management. When we know we're already around a place that most schools end up.
And Jake.
So I'm, from a big picture perspective, I'm struggling to. Let me put it this way. What I understood is the promise of the collaboration group was that we would have an opportunity to discuss school and town needs. And we have. Kind of a, a dichotomy in our population a little bit that where we have, in essence, we here as a school committee, we hear from parents who have the ability to pay and want to pay for a quality school system. I think at least in Essex, our town leaders are hearing from a segment of the population that are being pushed out or feel like they are unable to. Pay the taxes that a good school system at the levels that we're talking about can be supported. Ideally, collaboration was going to be a place where those two perspectives could come together and solutions could be explored to. Figure out how to, how to work with those. In essence, by putting it on town warrant for next month, that puts it right back in the public, right? The, the very same thing we were trying to fix last year of arguing in public and, and. Uh, you know, is it right back in the public, right? So it raises the question about the vibration, but it also raises the question about. How, how does this help us fix any of, any of that challenge, right? To me, it doesn't. And so while I think a lot of this, I agree with other comments, a lot of this is about building trust. And I'm all for that because clearly the requests that we've gotten, we've tried to tell the story and clearly haven't told it in a way that resonates or in a way that is. Acceptable and maybe a third party can do that for us in a way that can be taken up. So if this is partly about trust, then A, I completely agree with Erica that, you know, we need to work together to identify what the scope is. And it's got to be a relatively narrow scope. Right now, this is a huge scope. Uh, and. Anyway, the, so we have to, we have to negotiate that. But second, we also have to have some assurance that all of us, all five boards are going to accept and be ready to act on the results of that. And to some extent, to Kate's point, that comes down to value. If somebody, you know, somebody will take our money and give us recommendations for making cuts, they will do that. Whether or not, you know, closing a school is what we want to do, we will have, it takes time to figure out if that's the right action, right? So it's not. Whether or not we're going to accept that or not, it's a question on both town and us. But are we willing to, if the findings are that we are within common practice or best practice. Does that mean that the towns are going to be willing to support us financially at the levels that, that, that suggests? And similarly, if there are reasonable recommendations that we could undertake to adjust our program and or reduce budget, are we willing to take those on? So, but without knowing the scope and not without knowing the question, nobody can take that stand up front. And so therefore we can't necessarily assume that anything that comes out of this will be actionable or build trust. So I, I'm, I'm really. It really questions for me, what is collaboration meeting all about? And what can we do differently? And then one practical question here is if we decide not to support this next week, does it not go to town meeting? Or, or it's already on the warrants? It's already on the warrants, but we can, you know, you can delay a warrant, right? You can, you can push it off. I guess practically, do we need to take a stand for next week? Or do we, does our action somehow close that door for next week? What's, what's the practical?
So I can answer some of that because we, we took some of that up. So first of all, um, from the collaboration meeting itself, we discussed, um. A little bit of that because it comes down to accountability for the findings, right? So what's going to happen if, if, like you said, a third party takes their money and says, yeah, you could be running this much more lean. Well, then we're the ones who have to make that decision whether to do that or not. And, and the answer was, well, yeah. And if the school committee chooses not to, then they're going to have some explaining to do. That's, that's already feeling adversarial to me. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm having trouble reconciling how we're going to, um, have that if it's not. That, that's why I'm saying if we're going to do this, I would rather it be a request from the towns and then that we make a choice to actually drive the boat on this. That said, the towns are absolutely capable of putting something and, and generating funds, you know. Appropriating revenue for, for a purpose, absolutely. But to actually have access to our team, our students, our records and that sort of thing, we have to decide that. Go ahead.
I guess I'll offer this and preface it the same way Kate had prefaced her comments earlier. It's not to be confrontational or positional. But part of what we'll need to scope out is also the hierarchy of decision-making because there, there is a limit to the scope of decision-making that happens at the school committee level, which are top lines. So out of the findings, it could be you can take a twenty percent reduction in your staffing. Then we are still going to be the, the group. The team that was here today is going to go back and come up with. A best case scenario of how we can do that based on the needs and, and the knowledge of our student body. So.
But so conversely, I mean, I guess I struggled with the flip side, which is what if the findings come back and say. You know, we've run all the comps, which has happened in the past and the school budget is not any more exceptional than comparable districts. And so this is, this is how much this district costs. Is Essex going to find a way to afford that? Or are we still going to be bound by? The bottom line.
I, and I think that comes down to a little bit of. What is the, where's the collaboration in the collaboration right now? It's still feeling to me like all of the ask in, in this is for a district to find a way to cost less money. And we can do that. Pam has said it over and over. We can do that and we're actually engaging in that. I recognize that. That, that when, when times are tight is the time when things feel stressful and, and, you know, people don't necessarily know exactly how we're, we're looking at all the different things and. And, you know, we can continue to try and tell the story and help people understand, you know, what we're looking at and how and why. But I really believe that this comes down to dollars and, um, again, I, I'm in favor of having a review on the district. I'm in favor of using the resources that are, um, much more reasonably priced at hand that we're going to have to go through anyway between feasibility. For EES, between an upcoming DESI, um, you know, revamped thing, another opportunity, um. With a different organization. I mean, there are other options that are much less of a buy-in. And if we're going to do that, I think that we need to be intimately involved in that. And it's, we need to, I, I, I'm saying we need to choose to do it on its merits. That's, that's my, my opinion.
At the same time, it's worth studying, sorry, there's no studying.
And I will send it out to everybody, including collaboration, the outline of the DESI review and the component parts that are included in some of the standards.
Yeah, what you actually want is the standards, the district standards.
All right, Erica, thank you.
I, I guess I would say that having been involved in the policy subcommittee and our efforts to look at class size and try and understand it. Um, that, you know, a benefit that I see is it's not easy. The data's there. We've looked at a whole lot of data. We're trying, we're digging. I mean, this is my seventh hour in school committee today. So the, the effort is there. Having a truly independent, you know, expert who is able to more readily hold data on comparable districts. I mean, there, there is a possible value there. I think we shouldn't overlook the fact that when, when, when you talk about us digging in and having some of these resources for free. Um, I don't know how much more time all of us have, but like, you know, it. I still can in my head think of a way that as long as we are engaged in the process and come up with the deliverables. That perhaps this can meet everyone's needs. It's just the cost of it. Right. I understand. Yeah. Um, Kate, Anna.
I agree exactly with there at this point. Um, I, and I would take it one step further and say that I don't have any. Problem with letting voters decide if they want to appropriate money. Um. I think that it's premature to decide how that money is going to be used most efficiently. I think that, um. I have major hesitations about. The questions that voters will ask at town meeting, um, about how this money will be used. But I don't have any problem letting voters decide if that's how they want to spend their money.
It's not our ask, right? It's not our ask. Anna, did you have?
Um. I have a separate takeaway in the collaboration that we're looking about. I actually thought that, um. That you would just emphasize that this was brought up. It was mentioned in the onboard meeting and that's the whole point of having an onboard meeting. The one key takeaway from the onboard meeting is this. And that's why that collaboration meeting was. I don't think it was approached in a way that is biased in any way. Um, to your point, why does anybody want to have an operation audit or any kind of audit? As you know, we have financial audit every year. It's easy. I shouldn't say that, but it's very easy to have a kind of audit or still have other things going on. Because, um, different auditors are looking at different things. And I am assuming that this operational audit is going to be looking at different things than the regular state standard audit that is looking at. It's human nature that we hear what we want to hear, we see what we want to see. But having a third party does come with a good perspective for us to look at things differently. It'll help us to improve, in my opinion. Uh, but I totally agree that this has to be, you know, three stakeholders driving it together. Especially the school committee, especially administration, because when it comes down to implementation, they are the, the players to implement that. And so we need to have full buy-in. I do think that right now this is just asking us to open the door. To ask us to open our mind, to see if we want to entertain that idea, to see potentially the benefit of that. None of this, the question that we're asking, none of us have answered, but a lot of that we can work it through with the consultants together, to have that together.
We do have answers. We've had answers for years.
We have answers?
Yeah.
Well, we don't know the questions. How do we know if we have answers? We don't know the questions. We have, we have experts that we hire and pay a lot of money to.
The question on the table, the question right now is merging, merging the middle of high school and.
Like that's one question. There's.
We studied it a little more than ten years ago. We can re-study it again and present you with pros and cons of each and this body can make a decision. It, it's not difficult. But we don't know the questions we're asking. I think it's.
But that's not our ask.
I know it's not our ask, but I'm just wondering what we're actually deciding. It's on the warrant. The voters are going to decide next week.
Well, that's, that's what, that's what I.
What, what are we? I mean, that's not a tough.
Again, I'm not against.
So, so.
So then why are we having the conversation before? Why don't we have the conversation after we have the, the results of the town?
Because we're going to be asked what our stand-up is.
But we don't, I mean.
I just think we don't take a stance right now because we don't.
Well, we have choices. We can choose not to take a position as a body. Um, the reason we're having this conversation right now is because. In collaboration group, so I, I'm going to just be very open about it. Our last business meeting, when we were all here, we knew this had been a topic of conversation because we were getting emails from community members asking about procurement. And what was going on here? We learned that this conversation was happening with our town partners between other people in the collaboration group, not people at this table besides Ben. I know you're at the table. We learned, we learned that in the couple of days before our last business meeting, okay? At the business meeting, we learned that there had been conversation in an actual public meeting the night before about it, that we were not involved in. We, we weren't involved in this part of the process. That, that's a choice. At collaboration group, it was made clear, when, when the question was asked, why? It was made clear that there was some frustration that we as a committee had not acted more quickly on this particular idea. Being that it was so clearly driven home that that was the big takeaway from the all-boards meeting. That was not mine. Mine, I have a list of seventeen things, but that was, that was, um, a resounding message that came through a collaboration meeting. That there was frustration that we did not act more quickly specifically about this and that because of that, they choose, they chose to act on their own. That's okay. That's their choice. They acted on their own. They talked about it. They put it on the warrants to get approval for the money. But we do have to be involved, like we literally have to be involved for them to have access to our people. So this, what we're talking about tonight is an actual shift. From the way this came to be. This makes sense. Talking about it at, at this level of what you've presented tonight as a group, starting a process. The disconnect here is that that's not the way it came to be. And as Anna eloquently pointed out in our collaboration meeting, how we go about this matters. So at this point, yes, it is on the warrants because it was moved on. At collaboration meeting, we were at, we were, it was stated that, um, one reason the school committee wasn't contacted is that we would take too long. And hold this up. But. So we're having a conversation to see.
If we aren't actively in support, can the review even happen?
Well, they can do anything they want with publicly.
But they can't access.
They can do anything they want with publicly available information, but according to.
Office.
According to legal opinion, we have to approve access.
It's have, we all. It's have, the only group that can direct.
Your time.
So, so. But that wasn't part of the conversation then. That's something that we found afterward.
Is there? I, I still think we're, we're kind of premature. I mean, I know we are going to have to, but doesn't it make sense? Where we're at now, we've all shared some perspective on this. It's either going to pass or it's not. And if it passes, we will then have to decide, yeah, how we support it, whether we support it, whatever, whatever the customs might be.
I don't think he's going to have maybe some questions too, although he's allowed to.
He, he's a fully functioning member of this, just not a voting member. I didn't see your hand. I would have had to.
No, no, it's okay. Um, just kind of like reading this survey right off the bat. Or not survey, I'm sorry, documents, like what? I have a few opinions on it. I guess my first question, I think this is something like I've kind of observed in discussion of everyone. It's like, you keep saying like, oh, like we're going to get the answers to all the questions we want, like all the questions we have over the past years. And like, there's all these things we don't know. And I guess like, I don't sit in on your, the, the collaboration means or whatever, but like number one, I just want, and this is more rhetorical question. You don't have to answer. What is it? What are all of these big deep questions that everyone has that we currently don't have the answers to? My second question about, I guess more of this right here, so our expectation would be to identify deltas between the district, state, strategic initiatives versus a more generalized set of standards. And then like, all right, are we identifying practices, are we considered to be non-standard or unusual for public school districts? And like, it's this overview. And my question is, it was my understanding that it was the school committee and the superintendent's job to review the school and to make sure that everything was out, was, is, is in line with other schools. And it's kind of like, you know, everything is how it's supposed to be. So I guess my question is, is, is the school, is it, is the school committee, the superintendent not doing a good enough job that we have to have someone from a third party come in and review it? Because like, it seems like every single meeting we talk about like surveys and like people are always assessing us. It's like, like what benefits is a third party provide? I, that's like a legitimate question. Like I'm not trying to be a jerk. I'm just wondering. And then one more thing I have to, my last little point is it says that additional data should be sought through interviews and focus groups, which could include students, teachers, administration, county leaders. I'm focusing on the students, teachers, administration. If the, if the perception of the students and the teachers, and this is my perception, is that the whole purpose of this is to find efficiencies in the program, to cut costs, right? That's my, that's my perception of it. Okay? Like I'm saying, when I read this document, like that's how it comes across to me. And what I'm saying is, is how could you expect students and teachers to give honest information in a focus group? If the intention of the focus group, if they think that it's to cut the own, like cut the programs that benefit them?
Great question.
And like, I'm not saying that that's the intention of this, but I'm saying when I read this document and I see, okay, like we're finding differences between us and other districts. I understand there are like financial realities situation of like, hey, the town of Essex needs to pay for the budget. Like that's, that's a real problem. Like when I look at that, I think the deltas between our strategic initiative versus a set of standards, I think those differences are what makes us special. I think if anything, we should be working really hard to be different from other districts, not try to become more similar. That's those.
Thank you, Diego.
Sorry.
This is a product of our high quality education.
Right here. Hold, hold on. I had, because I gotta go and, I gotta, I gotta go in. So do you want answers to some of those questions from Ben, or do you want to just put that out into the atmosphere?
I, I would, I'd like answers.
Would you like to answer if you want to answer a question?
Yes, because I think your question actually hits on some of the other points that have been made by the rest, the rest of the school committee. I mean, first of all, this is about trust. The value in doing this is having an outside, an independent third party. I think to preserve the integrity of the process, it, you're not trying to solve for a specific criterion. So you're not actually saying you need to cut costs or it has to be two and a half percent or whatever the number may be. Because the, if I'm a resident and I'm a taxpayer, what I want assurance is that the district is being run with, is applying best practices in how it's run. And I also want to know if there's a few things that are unusual about the district relative to other districts. What are they and what makes them unusual? So it, it's, that information is helpful to me because then I can make a judgment as a taxpayer. Is this something that I want to support or not? So it is about the third party. It's about independence. And it's really not that much difference than I think a financial statement when an auditor would look at something. The importance is that it's someone who's disinterested. And that is, and, and I don't think it has to be complex either. I think it can be pretty high level.
I have thoughts on this, but I mean, we're going to go in order. So Jake, Anna, me, John.
Let's just brief.
Oh, no.
Where are we though? Like.
We are, we are getting our feelings out on this. We will take, we'll take one more round of getting our feelings out and then we'll set natural. Then we'll let the. Yeah, go ahead, Jake.
So I want to pick up on Pam's suggestion, but just to illustrate the potential of this, right? The district review that, that the department of that does has a set of district standards and indicators that include these categories, leadership and governance, curriculum instruction, assessment, human resources and professional development, student support and financial and asset management. In that category, including budget documentation and reporting, adequate budget, financial tracking, forecasting, controls and audits, capital planning and facilities maintenance. It probably behooves us to all, all five boards, look at this list of standards and indicators and see if this is, if some subset of this is really what we're interested in or if it is something different. And if it is something different, then this narrows it down a lot. Right? Particularly what is it we're actually looking for if it's not this? And Pam has it up on the, on the screen there.
Yeah.
But this, this could give us all a common reference that, and if you scroll down a little bit, you'll see there's, you know, this is just, these are just the categories. The actual indicators are quite detailed, right? So if there's some subset of these that we're interested, that could give us the language to ask the questions. It could also be the case that we contact the department and ask them if they can move this up in the list and we just have this audit done, right?
We'll make friends with others.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. We'll, we'll delay it for somebody else who doesn't.
Yes.
If this is what we're looking for, this might give us the language, because I think we're spinning here because it's so vague right now that it could be anything. And you can't go into a contract like this with the total universe open to you. You've got to narrow it down for the consultant to give you something productive and useful.
Yeah.
For what it's worth, it would feel very objective to have an entity like DESI and whoever they contract with to do it. Because it's not a consultant who may have a book or a product that is a solution to a problem that's identified.
All right. It was Anna, then me, then John. Go ahead, Anna.
I think this whole, from what I understand, the whole point of this is to, again, open the door to have the three stakeholders to work together. Whether, you know, after we went together and identified, because even the cost is up to, just like the term, it's up to $1.6 million, but it's not up to, we might not spend all that. This is up to maybe 120K, those towns will approve it, but we might not spend all that. After we work together, identify, maybe we are going to get benefits from this other assessment. So we don't need a consultant to work on that. Whatever that might be is something that end result is what we all agree on ideally. Now, two of Diego's questions about what are we trying to get out of it? I don't think what we're trying to get out of it is to cut the cost. Because the consultant, at the end of the day, once we identify what we're trying to do, the assessment might be, we're all doing, it, it might be there's no change. Or it might be that we actually are not doing enough on area X, Y, and Z. So there might be additional costs. I actually don't expect this assessment to be only cut costs. There might be some recommendations that we actually need to do more, especially coming from the end case result presentation with yourself, but elementary school, which frightens me about how low our scores are. So I actually would love third party opinion to help us to identify some of the things. Yes, we have other assessments. If there's going to be other tools and other areas and other experts to help us identify that, that would be great. As a school committee members, yes, it's our job to govern the administration about what we do. But it's also our job to open ideas, to have experts to help us. We are not experts in education. When the experts in whatever other things that we're trying to solve, we're all volunteers. So that's why I actually think this is really just to open ideas to see if we can just find ways to improve. The improvement might cost us money or it might save us money, whatever that might be. I actually think that we need to open our mind to, for improvement, to do better. We can always improve.
But, but nothing in here speaks to improvement, the academic program.
Because we haven't worked on this, but we're together yet.
It's all about saving money. That's how I see it. It's an exercise.
Maybe it was not written like the way, but.
I get what you're saying. And, and frankly, for what it's worth, I think, I think there is value in addressing that consultants are valuable at times, right? There, there are times when it's appropriate to invest money for understanding and that sort of thing. I will come back to. This, this started as a cost savings issue. If budget were not an issue, we're not having this conversation right now. And I, I do remember specifically, it wasn't meant in a malicious way or anything, but, but in a select person's meeting in Essex in September, it was specifically said, well, the hope would be that it at least yields back savings for the investment that we made. And so I think that we need to be real clear that if we're engaging in this, the, the resulting savings, we're going to have to then decide to that or commit to it. And I think that what, what we're talking about now as a process with Ben, what the way you phrased the conversation tonight is very different than what I've experienced up to this point. And I cannot, I cannot deny that. It's, it just is. That said, moving forward, if we want to have a different kind of conversation, I think this is a great place to start. And, and we can build from there. I, I agree that we need to build trust. But again, I, I, this, this is a cost savings measure and I would rather just save the cost. I do take exception to the idea. I've been really careful about not saying this in public meetings, but there is a level of distrust of the work that we as a committee are doing that I am not okay with. I know the amount of hours that individuals on this committee put in. I know the level of care and commitment that people are putting into taking this role very seriously. To, there's, there's nobody here that is a shill for just open the wallet and spend more money. We have spent more hours talking about that not being the case in recent years than any other time. And I do, I do take very seriously that people continue to assume that that's not the case, that we're not already trying for efficiencies, that we're not making them. Perhaps we're not doing a good job of explaining them, of helping people see them. We can work on that, but that doesn't mean it's not happening. And I think that before we invest, before we choose to say taxpayers, you should invest. Yet we, we have support to, to invest 120, 60 to 120,000 dollars. I think that there's a, there's quite a road before that. I really do. And the trust goes in all directions.
Do you get a chance to go?
I mean, I, you know.
Well, it was Jake, then Anna, then me, then John, and now then Erica.
Yeah. Am I, am I up?
You're up. You're up.
No, I just have, I agree with basically everything that's been said around the table. I think it's very expensive. You mentioned, you know, we're looking to solve high level issues, not complex issues. Well, for me, like that's a lot of money to, to invest for high level things that you can just find online, like very readily available. You know, things like cost per pupil, average teacher salary, average class size and compare that to other schools. I mean, you can find that. You look for it. And also I don't know what, what a, a sample report, like what this looks like, even looks like. You know, like typically, like if you really go through that process of engaging, before you, you pick a vendor, you should see what their reports look like and what that information looks like. So at this point, I don't, I don't support it. I think it's too expensive and, and I don't, I don't know what we're going to find out of it. We don't already know.
So finishing the round, I've got Erica and then it's Kate.
Um, I just want to circle back to a question I think somebody else posed to you, Ben, but I agree with Anna in terms of, you know, maybe I'm being idealistic, but I see the potential benefit here for us. And I, I too share concern with some of what we saw in the data today. But, but what if they do come back and say, actually, what you'd really benefit from is more interventionist? You need a summer program. We need to address some learning loss from COVID. And as it turns out, your budget's going up by X amount. Would Essex be in the position to commit to us that they will find a way to honor? Like, you know, I, I think it, it's important that if we're all going to come at this from the perspective of trying to have this independent third party, that we be willing to support the results. And I have some concern that it does come from a place of assuming that there's cost savings. And I am going to reiterate what Teresa said. We are working really hard to try to figure out how to find those cost savings. If they don't materialize and if in fact it actually ends up more expensive, what happens?
It goes to the voters. I mean, I've been.
But you told us the voters are going to vote down an override. So we kind of leave.
No, I'm saying voters need information to make, you know, to make a decision about whether or not to support the school spend. I mean, we operate in the town within the constraints of municipal finance. So it's, it's not really, it, this decision around what the school should cost based on the needs of the school. It's, it's, I think it's helpful to have that data. If, if, if you don't buy us a third party to say, well, you're trying to solve for X, but do, you know, conduct an evaluation through a lens that gets, you know, further defined based on this conversation, which is very helpful, then, you know, it, we don't know what the results are going to come back. It may say that this is, you know, that this is too much or too little. Like that's the risk we take, but I think the value is that it comes from a third party who's, you know, looking relative to other districts and looking relative to best practices.
Hold on, but we got to go in order. So it was, it was Kate and then Chris. And then that will have been a full round of all of us once. Okay.
This feels productive and collaborative. I am concerned about how this came up. I'm concerned about what I'm hearing about the collaboration group. I'm concerned that this proposal comes as a result of what feels like a recommendation from the collaboration group. And I feel as though those conversations should be taking place in public. I feel as though those should be open meetings because I feel like I am late to this conversation. I feel like I'm missing pieces of information and that I can't have this, this conversation with my committee because I'm missing pieces of background information that are critical to it. And so I am uncomfortable that this would come out of a closed door session with town officials that was not open for the rest of us. I just want that out there. I had been the person who had suggested that we allow silent observers at collaboration group. That was shot down. It was also shot down that they would be held an open session. So this feels uncomfortable to me. This feels collaborative and it's happening in the public and people are able to watch a recording of it and read comprehensive minutes of it. It's uncomfortable to me that the background behind this did not also happen in an open meeting.
Chris, you have a rap.
Alright, so I'm still going to read this. This is specifically for you and for your attitude and Ben. So the desired deliverable would be a report that provides a definitive thinking about structure and finances with any specific regulated actions for consideration. We would welcome any suggestions that were warned consideration, given the unique aspects of the RSD that would allow maintaining excellence within the constraints of proposition two and a half. That directly means cuts. That's, how, how does it work?
Because proposition two and a half allows for overrides. Because Proposition Two and a Half allows for overrides, which is a.
Well, would you say within the constraints of Proposition Two and a Half? I mean, so for even this to be a starter, okay. It would have to be rewritten, right? Because I think anyone that reads this.
Yeah, this is a first draft, yeah. And that, that's the spirit of this conversation, is exactly what we're having, which I embrace.
That's what I say, would have to be rewritten, because right now, that it almost hundred percent reads. So we would welcome any recommendations to. Have a grid program that all of our town leaders have said that they support. But maintain that grid program with cuts. So if that, if that's okay, if that's what it is, right? But or if it's not, and you know, we're looking for ways to be great, then it has to say that, right? You get what I'm saying?
No, because I think within the constraints of municipal finance, there's a mechanism that allows for exceptions to. Proposition Two and a Half that we live by, and that goes to the voters, right? So if the voters say, you know what, we need to be enhancing things, and that's what comes out of this, then I respect that. So I mean, what's important for me is the integrity of not biasing a certain outcome, because that defeats the whole purpose. So, so, fine, I mean, I take your point, Chris, like, and and this, I think we're coalescing around a shared understanding, though. Of what's valued here, you know.
So I had to.
Make a motion.
Well, hold on, because Abby has a question, so.
He's had a question, probably.
He had a question, so let's let Abby ask his question before we take a motion.
Just um, in light of. Kate's comment about the origin of this. So I think just going back to one of the collaboration meetings that I sat in. Which certainly aren't private, even if they're not publicly posted. I think I heard Manchester's board of selectmen and finance reps say that this process to work, they needed to have the scope of work. To develop collaboratively. I'm hearing you coming here saying you believe it should be developed collaboratively. I think I'm hearing school committee members who are. Those, whatever comments that are trying to keep an open mind to it, saying it has to be developed collaboratively. And I think I heard a pretty clear message from the Essex reps at meeting that it shouldn't, it should not be held up to develop that collaboration. So I guess my question is, has the board's selectman in Essex and the finance committee changed its mind on developing scope for collaboratively? Because that was pretty clearly not the position.
That was included in the minutes, actually, that very specifically.
So I mean, to me, and and the reason I ask that is, you can pay a person to tell you what you want, and it's clear that you're not saying that. You're saying you want a report that will be beneficial, and I'm hearing people say, if it's beneficial, yeah, let's do it. But I think, I think you can't get the trust on the way out the door if you don't have the trust some way in. And so that's really what everyone's kind of talking about. So to me, I would wanna know, even though I'm not a voting member, just as a person who's put. Way too many years into trying to help this school system thrive, uh, I would wanna know that there is that. Desire to develop the scope of work collaboratively, because otherwise, we're just gonna, it's gonna be an oppositional process and lead to. Another fight that we've already had. So you have any insight that you can share? I know we have some representatives here, maybe they can speak for that.
Well, you're the rep right now, so.
No, I mean, that is not the rep, so. No, but I mean, the reason why we're having this conversation is to be collaborative, back to that original point. I can't speak for the Man, the Manchester Select Board or the Essex Select Board.
Well, has that position changed at the public meetings that the Essex reps have had? Because the last time they spoke about it, they said that that would create a delay. I can see that there's an aggressive timeline which people are asking about for good reason, and I think it's just important to get that. I mean, that's pretty much whatever everyone wants to know, so let's just put it out there. Is that something that the Essex government reps wanna support? I think it would really actually influence a lot of people's decision.
Well, yeah, I mean, I can't answer that question, but I think based on the conversation or the discussion tonight. I think that provides, I think that provides a helpful input for revisiting that.
I'm not a voting member, so that's just my question.
Yeah.
Jake wanted to make a motion.
And I think it follows up nicely with Abby. So I make a motion that we request both towns delay their town meeting warrants on this issue. To allow us to collaboratively define the potential scope.
I can already see that we have members of our town who are expressing that they do not want this to be.
Well, hold on, we have to go through the official thing, so that was a motion. Is there a second, so that we can get first in the discussion? Is there a second to that motion? So the motion was a request to delay the vote.
That needs warrant at the town meetings.
I'm not hearing a second.
I'll second it to have the discussion. Well, I think that it's important. Okay, okay, and I. Heard that collaborating with the school, the concern about collaborating with the school committee was that we would delay this process. That that came directly from the Essex boards. It is in the meeting notes, not minutes, because it's not an open meeting. It is in the summary of the collaboration group. As soon as you made that motion. There was a react, there was a notable reaction that we are delaying this process. And so that is why I would vote against our public stance being to request the delay. They can ask for whatever money they want. I would have major hesitations bringing this. To town meeting, because I don't know that we can justify the cost with what we got here.
This wouldn't be going to town meeting, would it?
No, this wouldn't, but I mean, this, this is the answer.
This is all that's been.
Oh, oh, the warrant article, it's just money. Will just be money, right?
Right, right, but people will say, what do you want the money for?
Right, I just, I wanted to understand if this was some, the draft proposal was somehow attached, but it's not, or is it in Essex?
Well, you know, as I said at the outset of the meeting, I haven't really gotten edits on this document. So this was to foster a conversation tonight, which I think it served that purpose, so.
Uh, Anna. Again, we're in discussion about the motion on the table right now, so Anna.
The way that I see it, this piece of paper is to initiate a conversation. If we put our personal bias aside, if we, maybe the process, when how this all came about, was not kosher. Maybe how the timing of it is not the most perfect, but if we put all that aside. I think we're all on the same page about we are trying to find different ways how we can do better. Whether that is consulting, whatever, whatever that might be, but I do think we're all on the same page.
But regarding the motion on the table of asking for the town, asking the towns to delay their vote, that's the discussion we have to have right now.
So my, my intent in this way is to keep the door open. I think I'm getting the sense, and I personally believe that there is no way that an audit of this vagueness and scope. Can happen in a timely way to influence this year's budget. So I'd like to keep the door open to the potential of, you know, some value here. But it's gonna take us time. It's a little bit crazy to go to a town meeting about a collaborative effort. When there has been no communication among the boards, or at least among us and the boards about it. Uh, you know, this is all through the goodness of Ben taking the risk of, you know, putting something together, not even being a representative of those. Groups, right? So we have yet to actually know where the boards stand on this. Uh, other than through a closed-door collaboration meeting. And commentary of what other people have heard in other, other places, maybe. But it's just such a rush and disconnected process that it's going to be impractical. For any of us to speak to it next week. So my intent is, I don't even know if it's physically possible for them to take it up. Or how, how, how the boards choose to do that or act on this within the next week. I don't know if that's even possible. But we at least can send a message to the public that we are asking for a delay in order for this to be a collaborative process.
My response, well, we gotta go around, so I'm gonna take, I'm, I was waiting, I was waiting to, I was waiting to. Because I'm calling up, I was, sorry, I I will be more clear about my hand being there, thank you. I write down my, my initial.
You should have brought the gavel.
Abby, don't you have the gavel in the back?
I do, I have the gavel.
My response to that is that, just like I don't want. The towns to come in and tell us to do our job, I'm not gonna tell the towns how to do their job. Uh, they understand the scope of this. They brought this forth before we had this conversation. So they know what they're asking of their constituents. I I believe that. For me, the value of this tonight, if if it's, again, this was different from what I was expecting. Um, so the value of this tonight is, is not for us to say what we are or aren't going to do, because we have nothing to go by here. But I, at this point, if the town boards feel like they're comfortable and capable of arguing the value of this. To their constituents for, on whatever merits, I'm not gonna ask them not to do that, and I'm gonna let it be in the hands of the voters. If they wanna invest that kind of money in this, that will tell me something that, that I will find useful at this table. So that's why I would rather not delay it, or I would rather not request a delay separately from what they choose to do.
So I'm just gonna say, uh, like your attempt, but solely based on the fact that I do not believe we have any purview to. Make that recommendation to any town boards. That's it, that's all I was gonna say.
Thanks. Any other discussion?
Am I allowed?
You may. Um, the board recognizes Superintendent Pam Wodblin.
So I'll put my advising the board hat on for a minute. Um. I think, think critically about Jake's ask, your point, there may be a follow-up motion, but you're going to need some type of statement. Otherwise, both towns may act, and then you're forced into a position to reject. So if you are uncomfortable with it, if you feel like you need more time, having some type of motion of sentiment. Or recommendation, or advice, or position, I think is in your best interest in making it very publicly known. Because genesis of this was done without a call to the school committee. Or input in framing it and developing it. It was done between the two towns. They are free to act as they will. But you weren't invited into this, and you're responsible for it.
Yeah.
So you probably wanna have a statement coming out of tonight.
That's reasonable. Okay, so do we wanna just take a vote on this and then make a motion on coming up with a statement, and we can take a straw poll?
Well, my, my, my intent is this, essentially becomes our statement.
Not a no, but a.
Not a no, but a request to delay it so that we can continue conversation with the house.
To find a more cost-effective way of doing it.
Delaying the town meeting vote or delaying the development of the scope of work?
The warrants, the town meeting votes.
If we delay it, um, the next town meeting is when? May? Will we affect your budget?
We're not gonna have any, there's no way this work can have any impact on this year's budget anyway. There's no way a response can come back from consultant to have.
I think our collaboration group feels different.
But procurement alone would take.
Yeah, yeah, a month, a month at least, and that's once we agree on a scope of work. What are the questions? That's gonna take a month or two.
So bringing it back to the discussion of this, I am still in favor of not making a request to delay. But I I I am in favor of creating a statement based on the sentiment here. Any other discussion? Okay, let's take a vote on a request of the towns to delay the vote. All in favor of requesting that the towns remove the articles from their warrants to delay that vote? Anyone in favor?
Then it's not removed. I said delay.
Delay, thanks. Remove from the, got it, yes. Um, all opposed. Okay, so that motion fails. I move that we create a statement. Regarding where we stand as a group on this. And then we have to decide what that is. We have to take a straw poll in this.
Uh, if you're interested in maybe when this is.
They're the same night. So they're next Monday, they're both next Monday. So I mean, do we need to make a motion on that? Do we wanna just talk about what statement we'd like?
The motion should be the state.
Okay.
I think the statement is one of. Support for a collaborative. Review process with agreed upon. Objectives. And shared.
I think we need to evaluate it at all, that's the thing.
The statement is gotta be on next week's book.
I would like your.
I believe it's.
Because you're technically the CEO of the school committee, so. I would like your professional negatives.
There's value in review. My concern, having done that, is that you have to be very explicit and certain with what you want reviewed, what you want it reviewed against. And we don't have, we haven't even approached that conversation. I would strongly suggest we look at the Department of Education model. Again, I'm not endorsing it. There is a lot there. It covers all of the bases that we've been discussing. It is a truly objective organization. It has a common set of standards that are used statewide. It has access to all of the information statewide. It compares to other small districts in North Shore, Western Mass, and they don't have, they don't support municipalities. They don't support schools. They're gonna support what is in the best interest of students based on the standards that they put forward.
I don't know the state, like what kind of state, like what kind of verb.
Can you just write something real quick, Pam?
Or just like a gist?
This is our, this is our statement.
Yeah, it is our statement. Yeah, go ahead.
I, I don't understand how we come up with, without knowing how the very, the two boards are going to present this to their public. I don't know what my statement is. I know that the warrant will have an amount of money on it, which I'm not supposed to. That's up to the voters to decide. But depending on how it is presented, for instance, if this draft proposal were to be read in as what. Is being essentially voted on. This is where the warrant funds are being allocated. I would want to express disagreement with, this would not be the result of a collaborative effort.
So then can our statement be what we will support?
Well, our statement could be, could be as simple as, we have not had enough information and time to come to the consensus about.
I think that we will say that we are delaying the process.
How can we possibly be delaying the process? They can still ask for the money. So it, that, we were presented this information tonight. We have not had time to, or we have not received enough information to create a board, a coherent board. Um, vision of support or non-support for it, but that we are open to the idea. And the, the will of the voters will determine um, the seriousness, seriousness with which, with which. They let us know that they wanna put money to it.
Well, I think that that's, I think that the important part of the statement is the end piece that you just said.
Yeah, not the beginning, because I think the beginning has a negative tone to it, because at the end of the day, we all want the same thing. The cost could be zero if we go with whatever that statement is. But I think that the fact is to have a collaborative process, I do think is a good way forward. And I, I do think if we were to emphasize that in our statement, that will also bring the three stakeholders together to. Because right now, there's so many, so much to talk about. This doesn't have to add on.
I, I'm just hesitant to get us into a position by creating a statement based on a vote that we're not sure about with conditions we don't know about yet. That we're then gonna have to be meeting after the fact. I, I'm, I'm concerned about our committee now and in future, and that concerns me.
I think the committee's been put in a position where you have to make an unfortunate statement either now or later. Either you're going to say you're not prepared yet to endorse based on the timeline.
Right.
Or you're going to be saying after the voters have been.
Can we just say that we do not.
Asked to vote for something, to deny the voters' request because you're not comfortable with it then. So you are kind of in a no-win situation.
Can we just say that we don't have a position?
Well, can we say more than that?
Based on limited information.
Can we say that these are, this is what we would need to know in order to have a position?
I don't need to know because it's not
We did do that, like that is
People can listen if they want to, understand what sort of our concerns are, but
But people won't. That's the thing. We know they won't.
I think that's
I think
I think that would be up to each individual town board. If they wanted to invite someone from the school committee to call them down, perhaps, I don't think that's something that we vote on.
I think it's reasonable to have a statement together to say, this is early in the process. We're open to considering the idea and the will of the voters based on the town's ask for funding will help us understand the seriousness of the commitment.
That's a statement of support.
It's not a statement of support.
It has to be interpreted as a statement of support.
You could be as direct as saying, we cannot support this at this time due to insufficient information.
That's what the town boards do.
But so then can we say we cannot support it at this time due to the lack of an agreed upon
purpose of procurement, timing, and expectations regarding results?
And that is the complete opposite of what you just said, is a completely disapproving. I actually like the no statement at this time, because it would just
Manchester Town Board, where it says the board of the finance committee does not take a position on this article.
So school committee does not take a position.
That's, that's good. Yeah, no, could you just say, school committee is in support of working collaboratively to develop a scope of work or project to see if this would be in the best interest of the school community and taxpayers. Then that way, what you're committing to is working collaboratively to develop a scope of work. And hopefully it'll happen, but of course, it's, you know, whether that is successful or not, it's like any, for lack of a better term.
Have they been invited to work collaboratively on this?
That was my question.
Well, this is
That's indirectly approved of the funds.
Right.
That's a statement of support as well.
I don't know how we express an opinion. I come back to, how do we express an opinion without understanding how it's being presented? I think we have to
Say a no statement.
Yeah.
No, no official position at the board, but as individual members of the community, we can
Because then you're authorizing the funds, which will then establish the scope of work once the funds are approved.
Created. That's, that's
Comments will be made.
Yeah. Again
Why wouldn't you just say, although we cannot, we do not have the information, until such time the scope of work is developed, we cannot determine whether we do or not support it, but that's the next step. Sounds like
We're getting to the point of diminishing requests.
You could simply say, we think it's premature, you could say, we think it is premature to allocate funds at this time due to the fact that we have not developed a collaborative process or scope of work.
Yes.
Does it stand or disapproving?
It's not disapproving of the concept, it's alerting the community that they may be allocating funds when it's not necessary because the work isn't yet defined, or agreed upon by the boards.
I like the standard non-response that is typical of these warrants.
You will put in a motion?
Make a motion.
Make a motion to propose that the school committee, by the way, to take and do stand for the next Monday warrant the RFP article.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Question.
Yep.
Are you therefore then comfortable, if both towns pass, having us reaching a position that may be in conflict with the outcome in town meeting? That's all I would ask you to consider that.
I think if both towns pass that, then what we're hearing is they would, that towns are interested in doing that, but it's still our responsibility to find the best way to do it.
Yeah.
But there's nothing that would prevent the towns from drafting their own scope of work and then setting out an RFP, which is then presented to this body for action.
Which we then have to
I think there is something standing, I mean, there's nothing legally preventing them from doing it, but I mean, Ben has come here tonight to talk to us about how to be collaborative. I think it would be really surprising, and I would definitely be disappointed if we were handed an RFP that we then had nothing to do with. I mean, I think that's not the spirit of what we're talking about.
And if that were the case, then we would actively stand against it.
I'm just putting it out there for your
Yeah, no, I
Yeah, creating it, right.
I hear you, and I think that's, of course, a possibility. Once the funds have been allocated, people can do with it. But I think we, at some point here, we have to decide that we're either gonna work
Right.
in concert or work in opposition, and I think the former is a better route, and I'd like to think that our towns agree.
Beyond that, beyond the power play, time is a limited resource. And directing the time of our administration is one of our most valuable resources. And so if the committee isn't on board with that direction, then that is our purview. And to me, to me, it doesn't have to, it's not about the power play as much as like, is, does the committee feel that this is an efficient use of administrative time?
But that's something we can sort it out during the collaboration of the work, hopefully. Whether this is like a six-month project, one-year project, or a two-month project, it would determine how much time it's gonna be required, not only the administration, but everybody.
So we're in conversation about a specific motion. Is this regarding that? Go ahead.
I think it's almost it's, imagine standing up in front of town meeting. Voters are asking, what is this money gonna be used for? And we say we have no position.
So I will speak to that.
But
Yeah.
I mean, I finished. We are abdicating our advocacy for what we think is best here by taking a non-position. We're saying we've taken ourselves out of the conversation.
It's six days before town meeting, and this is the first time that we've seen this.
So my opinion on town meeting is that if we, so this is something we should be clear about, that if we choose to take a statement of no position, if we choose not to take a position, then each one of us needs to be very, very clear when we are participating at town meeting. We do not speak for the board. We have actively chosen not to take a position. So when we are at town meeting and getting asked these questions, first of all, they're not, it's not our ask, so we shouldn't be being asked these questions at that point. I see the point. Well, no, I just want to be real clear that if we don't do that.
Select board is already recommended, and the finance committee is already recommended. That's what's all the warrant.
Right, but if the public asks, specific people, our personal opinion, we can have personal opinion, but not the entire body.
Yes, but people will need to be very, very
What if somebody stands up at town meeting and says, I'd like to hear from this book?
Then, then the answer becomes, our board has no official, we actively chose not to take a stance on this. That is the answer, and we have to work by the will of the committee. So that is the, that is the point Jake's making here, that by choosing to do that, we can choose that, but that is our that's how it works, and that's, that is the way we do things. That we, we don't speak against the will of our committee. We don't, we work as a body. And if we want to have our own individual opinions, we do it in private conversations, but we don't speak against the group.
That's, that's not what I'm questioning. I'm not questioning speaking against the group. I'm actually if you're, if you're, if that you won't be called up in Manchester, if the vice chair is called in Manchester to express the school committee's view, and she has to stick with the school committee's view, I hear you on that.
Yeah.
But can, beyond saying no comment, can she say, we've only just received a proposal within the last six days, and we haven't had time to fully discuss how we would embark on a collaborative process?
That's what this has to say. Whatever the statement is, then that's what has to be encapsulated there. Because if it's just no comment, then the answer is no comment. So that's what we have to be very clear about.
So what about saying something along those lines?
Those lines.
That's what, yes. Yes. That's what we're
I don't even remember what I said, people. I got up at four.
Yes, we're coming right back to the beginning. We haven't had time. Say it, just say, say it again, like you just let it roll right off your tongue.
I got nothing. I got nothing.
Enough time to something.
We didn't have enough time.
Had insufficient time to fully
embark upon the process so adequately.
Not on the board.
Adequately I have no idea, adequately embark.
Evaluate our stance.
Yeah, I know, now I'm thinking of my empty brain. The last brain was just
We haven't had enough, we haven't had enough time.
Insufficient time to fully
Determine a stance, determine whether we are
But I didn't say just that. I said, fully evaluate the collaborative
Literally have a recording.
That's it.
The merits of the, to fully evaluate the merits of the proposal.
To draft the scope of work at the end of the day, I mean, it's gonna change. So we don't even have a scope of work yet, so how do we tie it? And that's
So
Not on the committee, but I can tell you what I heard. We have not had the time to formulate an opinion, but would seek to work collaboratively on defining scope of work going forward.
Did you say those things?
I have no idea.
You did say something.
Something like that.
I'm not discussing you as close.
Say it again, Ben. Say it again, Ben.
I said, we have not had a time, we've had, we have not had time to formulate an opinion, but would seek to work collaboratively on defining scope of work going forward.
Should the, should this be approved?
To determine if the funds are approved.
I think that's a given.
To determine the merits of the
It's not a given. We're gonna be very clear about everything in this. Kate, are you typing this faster than I can write?
We have not had time to formulate an opinion, but would seek to collaborate, collaborate.
Seek to work collaborative, collaboratively on defining a scope of work going forward.
Maybe not seek, I think we'd be open to working collaboratively.
Yeah, you guys can
To determine if the
To determine.
I feel like somehow what I said was not exactly a statement of success.
I know.
We haven't had time.
Six days.
Yeah.
Insufficient time to fully evaluate.
Determine whether we should embark on this.
Right. It wasn't, it wasn't about that what I was saying.
Essentially, you're trying to say that you neither confirmed nor denied, but you haven't had enough, you haven't had enough time to come up with an opinion of whether or not you should support this going forward, but you're willing to engage in collaborative exercises to make that
Recognizing how late it is and that we have, we are well past the point of diminishing return. Can we, do we have to wordsmith it right here? Like, can we, can we get the sentiment?
You need to vote on it.
We have not had time to formulate an opinion, but would seek to work collaboratively to determine the scope of work going forward.
To determine whether
That's not really support because we're saying that we didn't have enough time.
To determine whether we choose to
Did you add the
Whether we can arrive at a collaborative, so we have had insufficient time to determine whether we can arrive at a collaborative scope of work.
Say again.
We've had insufficient time to determine whether we can arrive at a collaborative scope of work.
Right, a collaboratively on a scope of work.
Give the position forward against it this night.
Whether we can arrive at a
Be an attorney. I don't have any time to be an attorney, Avi. All I've done today is speak for the committee.
We've had insufficient time to determine whether we
We have jobs.
Right?
I have a collaboratively developed developed scope of work.
Develop.
Collaboratively.
Developed. Yeah, thank you.
Therefore, the committee does not have a position.
Well, how about therefore the committee does not support?
Yeah.
You don't support because of this.
That we don't support.
Well, I like that.
Don't support. Think that closed the door, doesn't it?
No, we don't support this particular warrant.
Doesn't mean we don't support.
Or you could say, therefore, the committee did not take a position.
Because
Not taking a
Pressing of it is premature because we don't have the scope for
Yeah.
Therefore, the school committee does not have a position at this time.
Wait, say it again. I like
It's gonna read it out.
We've had insufficient time to determine whether we can collaboratively develop a scope of work, therefore the committee does not take a position on this.
It's not
I see that you're not happy with
It's that big, a lot, left on both sides.
That sounds
It doesn't matter if it's negative. Guys, we've just spent like two hours on this. People can come revisit and know every single bit of how we feel about it. We have to
We have to
We do, we absolutely do, but we also have to end at a point. So, so we've got a proposed wording.
Who's the question?
We're not even, oh yeah, we were in a motion.
Yeah.
We voted on Jake's, Anna had a motion.
Yeah, we have them.
To take a no stand.
To take a no stand. So I re, would you like to, no, you don't want to revise the motion. I move
You can extend them.
Can amend the motion.
Or let's, all right.
But can this word, does this word take a no stance?
Let's vote on, what's up there right now?
We have had insufficient time to determine whether
It's up there right now.
Is Anna's saying no position?
School committee currently takes no position to all this point. I second it.
Okay, so Okay. So you're saying as opposed because the current motion on the table is just no, no stance. Give the language. We'll vote on that after.
So let's vote on that.
All in favor of just straight saying no stance? Okay, all opposed? Okay, the motion fails.
No.
Now, Kate, make, make your motion.
Make a motion that the committee that the committee's official stance is that we have had insufficient time to determine whether we can collaboratively develop a scope of work. Therefore, the committee does not take a position at this time.
Second. Any discussion?
I would be much happier if instead of not taking a position, saying we don't currently support this one.
Well that's very far from no stand. It is, so we need to vote on what's here. So vote all in favor of the wording as Is there any other discussion? All in favor of the wording as
Discussion.
Yes.
Wouldn't you guys want to see what voters want? Because
Oh, who are you talking to? You're talking, Jake's the only one who's saying no.
No, what I'm saying is, even that, I feel like it's still a little bit negative tone to it. If we keep ourselves neutral, we can know exactly what the voters want from both towns.
So there's
But there's
There isn't a neutral
What
There's the yes or no.
It doesn't
I moved to vote.
Second. Any discussion? I'm moving, no, we don't have to have discussion. All in favor, we're moving the vote. Okay.
No, all in favor of
Now, let's move. The vote, we're in favor of moving the vote. Great. Okay, the vote. All in favor of the wording, the motion as Kate has presented it. One, two, three, four, five. Any opposed? Five to two, carries. That is our official position. So when we are at town meeting, hold on.
Billy, fire.
It is not Meeting on Monday if you feel like you need to.
What's that?
You can call a meeting on Monday or Tuesday. Is it Monday or Tuesday?
It's Monday. They're both Monday. They're the same night. It's
Go over and chime in. I can't speak. Talking points.
The meetings are at the same time in two different places, so I think that's gonna be difficult. So that being the case, Kate has that wording, she's going to email it out, and we as a committee, again, we work by the voice of a committee, so that is our stance. In our, in our private conversations, it's our personal stance, but that is our stance by the committee. In our public meetings, that would be a chosen, so that is how we have to work. Okay. Ben, thank you. You left. We will, but hang on, we do polls. Just hang on half a second. We are going to postpone this conversation about additional lost my agenda. We're gonna postpone the conversation about discussion evaluation of the rest of the ideas generated at the all-boards meeting. I am still waiting on two people, Jake and Chris, to send me or check your straw poll list on that. But we will add that to the agenda on our next meeting. School committee comment?
I have a comment.
Kate has a comment, and Jake has a comment.
I want to reiterate my point about the collaboration group. I know that we have some of our town leaders here tonight. I would I would ask that the collaboration group consider whether or not these should be considered open meetings going forward. I think that it's a fun area, knowing how the meeting law is, and it feels uncomfortable having these conversations as a board without knowing where the information and where the guidance and then advice is coming from.
I would agree to that. I think we need to put it as an agenda item to have a additional conversation about this as a, as a group altogether at our next meeting because this is a bigger issue, and I, I have some concerns about that.
But it could just be as simple as opening.
Yep, and I think we're going to have to discuss that as a group again, for sure, as an actual agenda item. Jake, you had a comment?
So following up on a couple of the presentations we've had from the principals in prior meetings and of today's meeting, but in prior meetings, I asked a couple of questions about curriculum review process and got kind of mixed answers. There, so I met with Heather about that, and there is indeed a curriculum review process going on for history and social science. And Heather has a thoughtful plan for what other subjects look like and when and why she would undertake them. So at some point, I can appreciate having Heather give us an update on what that process looks like because it was a little confusing in the past couple of meetings. But there is a thought, Heather has a very thoughtful way of thinking about it, and I'd love her to share that with us.
Thank you.
We have another comment. I'm sorry, I, I know. I'm the one who's been trying to close the meeting for an hour, but I, I do want to say this. I think we do need to think about as a committee, how we approach, like the all-boards meeting was many months ago. It feels like it was like three years ago. And we have had so much on our agenda, so this isn't meant as a criticism, it's meant as just some reflection. I think that there were ideas coming out of it that I felt were somewhat urgent in terms of our ability to discuss them, decide how to move forward with them. And because we've had so much else on the agenda, I, I think we set ourselves on a path where, I don't know exactly what happened, but there's a lot of distrust and bad will over, you know, one town moving forward and without us. But I'd like to see us also try to move expeditiously when we do have some of these time-sensitive issues and somehow rearrange our, what we have on an agenda for a particular night to address.
So that's my, so tonight we would have had a real chunk of time to discuss that. I have the compiled information, so we can go through all of that, but we had to set this time because of the town meetings, time-sensitive nature, but I agree.
So your next, your next couple of meetings. Two or three meetings are basically consent agenda and budget, you know, all things related. So you'll have time and we have time worked. I don't think Heather came at some of the next meetings. It would be very time-consuming.
Agreed. Any other school committee comment? Okay, motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor? Thank you all. It is. 10:39.